Member Staunton?
Here.
Member Stewart?
Here.
Member Swenson?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here. We have a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening. There's a couple of changes that we need to make. Manager Neil, you, I think, first of all, wanted to eliminate 5A. Was that correct?
Yes, Your Honor.
They'll postpone that to a later time.
The presentation just did not come across very well on our video system tonight, so the consultant asked us if we could postpone so he could re-prepare his presentation, and we'll do it at a later date.
All right. Thank you. And then, as a substitute for 5A that was removed, the mid-decade analysis of housing and population report, I'm going to substitute in there our guests from Ouagir County, Kenya. And we're going to have a little presentation by Judge Lejune Lang from our community. And then, we're going to meet the deputy governor, and he's going to talk a little bit about Ouagir County and the city of Ouagir, that the county is adjacent to Somalia, and it's a very interesting part of the world. So, with those two changes to the agenda, is there a motion to adopt the amended agenda?
So moved.
Second? Got a motion, second, to adopt the amended meeting agenda? Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Carried. Next, on the consent agenda, is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda?
I just have one, which is 4E.
4E, all right. And I'd like to remove 4I.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I'll make a motion to approve A, B, C, D, F, G, H, J, K, and L.
Second? All right. Got a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda designated by Member Swenson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Carried. Back to 4E, which is the proposed ordinance to set the water rates for the Morningside neighborhood for 2015. Member Brindle?
Right. Thank you. In the past, probably four years, if not longer, Joanie Bennett, former council member who sat at this dais with us, was -- she was appointed to the Minneapolis Water Board and represented the city of Edina on the Minneapolis Water Board. And with her retirement from city council, we do not currently have anyone on the Minneapolis Water Board. So, while I don't have an issue with the item that's on the council agenda this evening, I thought it would be good to just talk about that for a second and see if we want -- wish to have another individual representing Edina on the Minneapolis Water Board, and whether that individual should be a council member or possibly a staff person from Public Works who knows something about water, which I do not. So, I thought I'd bring it up.
Manager Neil, your thoughts about the potential for a staff person occupying this position that was attended to by Member Bennett?
Well, typically, Member Bennett attended, and if there were votes to be cast, she cast that vote. But she almost always went with Brian Olson, our Public Works Director, and he was just as a regular attender as council member Bennett. I can tell you that the city of Minneapolis does appreciate elected officials being appointed to represent the other cities that purchase water from them, but not all of them provide elected representatives to that board. So, if there is a council member who is interested, or perhaps even interested in knowing more, because I don't think they have set their meeting -- they typically meet quarterly.
Okay.
And I don't know that they have set their meetings for the year, so I don't really have a sense of kind of day and time. But if it's an area -- subject matter area of interest for anyone, it's not a huge commitment.
Is there anyone on the council that would be interested in serving in this position? Or maybe I should not put anybody on the spot, but if you are interested in this, let's have a conversation with Manager Neil.
Okay.
All right. Do you want to move the matter?
Yes, I will move item 4E, ordinance number 2015-01, setting 2015 water rates for Morningside.
I'll second that.
And just to explain that, Morningside water rates apply to anyone who gets Minneapolis water. You don't have to be in Morningside to be that individual. You could live at 54th and France, for example, and you're still -- you still receive Minneapolis water, and therefore, this would be the rate that would apply to you.
All right. We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Does that include second reading?
Waive -- you want to waive the second reading?
Yes.
All right. Would the seconder agree to that?
Okay.
Okay. We got a motion and a second to handle this on a second reading basis. We need a roll call vote.
Okay. Member Staunton?
Aye.
Member Stewart?
Aye.
Member Swenson?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye.
The next matter on the consent agenda was one that I pulled. It was a draft for a project entitled BA 412, which was the proposed Arden Park D neighborhood road reconstruction project. It was approved on a preliminary basis by the council. And Mr. Milner, you did a good job, I think, of, in the last four weeks, developing some plans pursuant to the request of the council so that we could look at some of these ideas, because there was some concern by some of the residents that with the narrowing of the streets, with the proposal for parking on one side, for the -- I'll call it the shrinkage, proposed shrinkage of the cul-de-sac at Bruce Place, not only the mouth of it, but also the circumference of it, there were some, I thought, in my mind, some legitimate concerns. And I met with some of the neighbors last week on some of these same issues. And in fact, I think the council received today some photos of the cul-de-sac and the proposed shrinkage of the cul-de-sac based on staff recommendation, and then also got a chance to see some of the traffic that goes on down there in the cul-de-sac and the difficulty some people have turning around. Now, there's some heavy equipment, I think, in the cul-de-sac, but nonetheless, I think it was an issue that I wanted to discuss with the council. I, you know, some of those folks down there have lived there 50 years, and they've made some very compelling points with me. And so, I'm thinking that as we move forward on this project, we ought to think seriously about leaving the cul-de-sac in its existing dimension, both with respect to the opening to Bruce Avenue, and also with respect to the diameter of it at the base of the cul-de-sac. One of the other issues that is a common concern is the idea that when we reduce the width of the streets, the proposal is to allow people to park on one side of the street. And I think in our community, unlike Minneapolis, I mean, there are some parts of our community that are used to parking on one street, Arden, north of 50th, for example, folks in Edina are still thinking that they'd like to be able to park in front of their own home. And so, the suggestion is that we not impose the parking on one side of the street only until we see whether parking on both sides of the street doesn't work when we reduce the width of the streets. Also, that would allow us to avoid all of this street signage that would be periodically placed to give people notice that they can only park on one side of the street. So, those were two of the key things I wanted to visit with council members about. And I don't know if anybody else has had communication with some of the neighbors, but I thought those two concerns were particularly appropriate. Member Swenson?
One of the streets is going to have a sidewalk, and we always try to put parking on the sidewalk side because it protects the sidewalk. It adds another buffer to the sidewalk. So, if on Arden you're parking on both sides of the street, you have taken away that consistent buffer.
Well, we were going to come back. As I recall from our December 9th discussion on this, we said we were going to come back after a time and look at how the design was working.
Right. I think we committed ourselves to a year after it was finished.
To a year, yeah. So, if we commit ourselves to a year after, I mean, I don't care if it's leaving parking on both sides and then reviewing it after a year to see if the plan works better with parking on one side, and then change it at that point, or if we change it at this point and review it in a year and see if the plan is working as intended, and decide at that point if we go to parking on two sides. I think it's -- I guess I'd be willing to leave it at parking on two sides, look in a year, and see if it works with the size of street that it is, as long as we are going to come back and look at it.
What's the proposed width of the street south of 50th on Arden?
There's, Mayor, members of the council, there's some specific streets that are going to be 24 feet wide, and others 27 feet wide. So, whenever there's a sidewalk facility, they're going to be 24 feet wide, so there is not an opportunity to have parking on both sides on those streets. So, that's Arden, Halifax, and Minnehaw Boulevard. The other streets that are 27 feet wide, Councilmember Brindle had that exactly right, that part of that approval of that 27-foot section was to come back in a year after implementation to see how that parking was functioning at that time, and we could always go to removing that restriction of parking to one side and go back to two-sided parking. That works today, 27 feet works today, but this project is really getting us to start thinking about that space for all modes of transportation. And that's why we limited parking to one side of the roadway on those streets with no sidewalk proposed.
The 24-foot width proposed, is it for Halifax, Arden, and what was the other street?
Minnehaw Boulevard.
Minnehaw Boulevard.
Yep.
All right. You know, I think it's a good argument that Member Swenson is making with respect to the 24-foot wide streets. If there's a sidewalk facility there, parking on one side of the street only is probably imperative. But on the streets where we've got 27 feet in width, I still think it's worth seeing whether we are in need of reducing parking to a single side of the street after a year. So, I would be inclined to let it go under the present rules on the 27-foot wide streets and allow people to park on both sides of the street.
I think this is, first of all, there are two different issues here. The cul-de-sac issue, I agree that best to not make the changes to the cul-de-sac, because that would be pretty irreversible. And I think those concerns that have been expressed are worthy concerns. The sidewalk issue, on the other hand, and parking on one side of the street, this was decided before I was on the council, but the decision that was made at that time was, yes, that we would try it out for a year and see if we should reverse it, but the trying out was to try it out with parking only on one side. And so, now you're suggesting changing that. I feel like this has already been argued.
Yeah.
I'm suggesting changing it with respect to the 27-foot wide streets only, not the 24-foot wide streets. Maybe we can go in steps here. I'd like to propose a motion that we maintain the existing configuration of Bruce Place cul-de-sac when we reconstruct Bruce Avenue and Bruce Place. Is there a second to that motion?
Including the sweeping entranceway to it as you come from the north?
I think there's a plan to build a bigger island. Yeah, so the -- sure.
So, here's the current layout for the -- So, you can see, here's the proposed cul-de-sac. How it's -- we're shrinking it down four to five feet, kind of on the entrance into the actual cul-de-sac, holding the west end because of storm sewer structures there. We didn't want to shift that. So, that's the one point I'm hearing right now is whether or not we keep the existing, following that outside lines. The other comment I just heard is the entrance into that area with the -- there's an existing island. We were going to make those entrances 27 feet wide on each side, which is our common street width, and expand the size of this island with that design. I didn't know, Mayor, if your proposal was to keep that --
Yeah. Let me, based on that information, let me withdraw that first motion, and I think that's an adequate width coming into the cul-de-sac from both sides, because I know that the neighbors are interested in expanding that island, and I think the configuration allows for that. So, you've got 27 foot of width from each direction coming into the cul-de-sac, but I think at the base of the cul-de-sac, we should maintain the existing width. So, that would be my motion, is that at the base of the cul-de-sac, we maintain the existing width at the very -- at the west end of Bruce Place. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Discussion?
I have some. In the proposal that we looked at and voted on in December, what stormwater measures are being implemented in this design that are not currently there in the cul-de-sac form that's there?
Yes, storm sewer improvements. We're adding an extra catch basin, and we're also installing this valley gutter down here to take some of the water away from the cul-de-sac, because we know there's a stormwater issue when this overtops drains very close to those homes. So, we're going to be pulling that water down closer to the entrance into the park where some of that water goes today.
Are you able to do that if the configuration of the cul-de-sac remains as it is today?
Yes.
Okay. So, it doesn't preclude you from doing that?
Doesn't affect our improvements of stormwater, either case.
It just doesn't decrease the amount of asphalt?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Other? Member Staunton?
Director Milner, I'm just wondering, what was the rationale for shrinking it in the first place?
It's bigger than, in our opinion, bigger than it needs to be. Our 60-foot diameter cul-de-sac is our standard. We've used that for many years. It's functioning adequately for fire trucks. We have a template. We use to turn through the cul-de-sac. Many of the pictures you saw today were dumpsters illegally parked on the street, cars parked the wrong direction. All those are limiting what can actually turn around on there. Those various pictures shouldn't be happening in that area, according to our current ordinances.
And so, the idea was it's just the cul-de-sac was more than we need, and so, that's the reason to --
Correct. Reduce stormwater runoff, less pervious areas, less maintenance costs when you've got less pavement.
And about how much, I can't tell from the scale, how much are we talking about in terms of square footage, or how many feet narrower is it right at that?
Four feet.
Four to five feet.
On each side?
It's currently 68 to 70 feet in diameter. We put in, or we're proposing a 60-foot diameter one.
All right. Thank you.
It's overall four feet narrower, not four feet on each side?
Eight feet in diameter, so it goes from --
Oh, so it is four feet on each side?
Four feet on each side.
Okay.
Yep. And typically, we center it. This one's a little off-center because of those storm sewer structures on the end.
What was persuasive to me with regard to the existing configuration, or the retention of the existing configuration, was the fact that the neighbors, who, one of whom has lived down there for 50 years, you know, the photos that they sent in may have been a bit aberrational in the sense that there's a dumpster in the street, and, but nonetheless, there's a lot of snow that's pushed in there for storage. There's a lot of parking that takes place in the cul-de-sac, and it was just, I believe, their firm belief that it would be better off maintaining the existing configuration to allow the activities to take place that take place in that end of the cul-de-sac. Any other questions? Member Staunton?
Driveway, is there a driveway interface that'll change, and we'll take care of the apron, et cetera?
Yes, there'll be extensions to driveways. The ones on the end here won't be affected much. This one will be extended out, new apron, new apron, and then these are far enough back that they're not affected. So, there's two that affect a little bit more than others. But yeah, we put the driveways whole again when we're done.
Okay.
Extend them.
All right. Any further conversation on that? Or is we could vote?
Okay.
Those in favor of retaining the existing dimension of the cul-de-sac on Bruce Place, say aye.
I thought your motion -- I'm confused. Your motion was to change it. So, you just said those that wanted to maintain, oh, current configuration as to this plan, not as it is today?
As it is today.
As it is today.
Maintain it as it is today when we renovate the --
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. So, all those in favor of retaining the existing dimension of the cul-de-sac on Bruce Place, as it exists today, as part of the reconstruction project, say aye. Aye. Opposed say nay?
Nay.
The nays have it. All right. Any thought on the 27-foot wide street issue with respect to parking on one side versus two sides of the street? I don't think it's necessary to advance a motion unless we think we have a change of heart here. Member Swenson?
I actually agree with Member Stewart. I thought we did a pretty good job of discussing this thoroughly the last time, even though he didn't participate in it. And I think the way to be able to find out what's going on is to have that year long, but I think it's best to have the year long on one side and then change it if we need to. I think that is an easier change than to go the opposite way. So, I think the way we passed it in December is personally for me, the way I'd like to go forward.
Can I ask just a question on that?
Staunton?
With respect to the signage, I did see the plans talked about the no parking signage on one side of the street. Is there street lighting as well?
There is approximately six light poles that are just getting replaced. It's the city-owned lighting system.
So, is there any chance to put the signage on the streetlights instead of creating more signposts?
We typically look for opportunities to put them on the same poles. We try to put them on common property lines, or if there's a tree on a property line --
Right.
-- kind of out of the view of the windows of the homes. We try to put those where it's not right in the middle of someone's yard.
Because I am somewhat sympathetic to the notion that, you know, you kind of look down the street and you see sign after sign after sign, whether it was the one before. And if we've got streetlights, or trees, or other places to hide them, that makes sense to me.
Did we, Director Milner, as we fully vetted this issue of the lighting, we've got some of our lights we're going to replace with some decorative lighting, and there are some others that aren't going to be replaced, I think owned by Excel. Have we explored any opportunities to make wholesale lighting changes that would improve the neighborhood to the extent they would be consistent with the type of lighting that we're recommending?
Yeah, I met with various resident groups out there and had discussion about the lights. They are going to, they're vetting that idea around the neighborhood to see what kind of support it is, because it is an additional cost, and see what the comfort level is with that. And then, they could either contact Excel and work directly with them, or contact myself and the engineering department. We could coordinate that. So, I have not heard back from those groups, but there are a few making the rounds, seeing what kind of support there is for lighting changes.
Yeah. Good. Thanks for giving them a little extra time on that to vet that issue. All right. We've got a item here, received a draft construction plans for BA 412 Arden Park D neighborhood. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay? Nay. Now, we're going to get to the special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda. And Judge Lejune Lang, if you would come up, I think to the side podium would be the best. Judge Lang has served our community in Hennepin County here for, she did serve our community for over 21 years as a Hennepin County District Court Judge. And during her career, she got involved in quite a few things that were Africa-based. She's the current honorary counsel for Minnesota for South Africa. And in the mid-'90s, she started doing work in Kenya, and she has brought with her to Minnesota a group from Ouagir County. And one of the folks you're going to meet tonight is the deputy governor, Abdallah Hafid Yaro. And she'll make a few comments and then introduce Mr. Yaro.
Good evening, Mayor Hovland, members of the city council, city manager Scott Neal. The International Leadership Institute is a Minnesota nonprofit organization. Our mailing address is 5021 Vernon Avenue, Minneapolis 55436. We have been working since 1994 as a global organization, primarily in East Africa, as well as other parts of the world. We host a sister-city organization, sister-city relationship with the city of Minneapolis, and we have assisted other cities to bring exchanges of professionals. We've taken the firefighters from the city of Minneapolis to Africa to train firefighters there, as well as emergency response. So, the cities have been enriched, the employees have an opportunity to give of their time and talents, and also help new governments and emerging governments be able to move forward with their responsibilities. The deputy governor is here. Would you come forward, and he will make a few remarks. Thank you.
Excuse me. Thank you. Governor Yaro, welcome.
Mayor James Hovland, distinguished members of the council, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My name is Abdallah Hafid Aboula Yaro, the deputy governor of Ouagir County Government. I'm an accountant by profession. Started, born and studied in Ouagir County for my primary and secondary level, and went to the university in Nairobi, did accounting degree, and then I did a master's in public policy from National Graduate Institute for Policy Studies, Tokyo, Japan, and the World Bank Scholarship. I normally call myself an accountant by profession, an economist by passion, and a politician by default. I want to take this opportunity to introduce the members of my team, just to say hi to you. The county government of Ouagir is led by a county executive committee headed by a governor, a deputy governor, and 10 county executive members. With me, I have the county executive member for finance, Mr. Salah Adan, county executive member of health, Rukia, and county executive member of water. Thank you. Like, we are here in Edina, Minnesota, at the invitation of International Leadership Institute, led by Judge Lejune, and on a follow-up of a former visit by our governor and the senator. Ouagir County has a population of around 650,000 people with a land size of 56,000 square kilometers. It's a county with plenty of sunshine and sun and a clear sky, where you can actually literally count the stars at night. And therefore, a lot of opportunities in terms of renewable energy, huge acres of land for agriculture which is still untapped and underutilized, and elaborate opportunities in terms of water technology and health sector. And we therefore hope that with our research collaborations with the people, with the city of Edina and the greater Minnesota, the people of Edina and Minnesota will be able to benefit or will be able to tap into these opportunities when we create, once we create this leadership. And of course, there are many other, plenty of other business opportunities. We have been in the city of Edina for the last 10 days, and we have really enjoyed our stay here. Of course, we did not enjoy the cold, but we really enjoyed the other places that we have gone to. We have visited a few places, like the hospital, the Southdale Hospital, like the Gulf Dome and the fire station, and we're really impressed with the best practices and the governance that is in place. And for that matter, I would really like to appreciate the city manager, Scott Neal, who has been with us for those few days. And we believe the city of Edina is the best model place for us to emulate from, to emulate from, and to benchmark with. We therefore hope that we are going to build the newborn county of Ouagir and make it like the city of Edina, maybe in the near future, because we believe we are in the best place. I've traveled widely myself, and I've never seen such a beautiful and well-managed city. And I hope we're in the right place. And it is, and we really thank the International Leadership Institute for showing us this precious place that we never knew, the first place. And I believe all this is based on the basis of good governance and best practices, that we hope that if we anchor our young infant county of Ouagir, we should be able to do, to provide or to improve opportunities for our people of Ouagir. I therefore thank you very much for this opportunity that you have afforded us to be with you here and to address the council, the distinguished council. Thank you very much, and may God bless you.
Thank you, Governor. Governor? Governor, would you come back up for a moment, please? Would you come back up to the podium? I wanted, one other thing I wanted you to explain quickly for folks. And then -- and that is the change that took place in Nairobi from having a centralized government to more of a decentralized government, when that happened and how that's working when you have a more decentralized situation. So you have your own governor and senator from Wajir that have a better control over their own destiny.
Exactly. In 2010, Kenya issued a new constitution. That is in August 2010, when that's when Kenya issued a new constitution, where we are provided, where the provision of devolution came into place, the existence of devolution comes to place. It's more of modeled in the same way as, it's much modeled in the way of, in the same way as the United States, but being still very new. Devolution is only two years old. It has been decentralized now, that there are 47 county governments and one national government. So we have 48 governments in Kenya, one national government and 47 county governments, which are all independent of each other, but mutually independent, mutually, with mutual cooperation or relationship. So, for the people of Kenya, actually, this is the best thing that has ever happened to them, because earlier, what used to happen, everything is centralized at Nairobi, which is their capital city, and some counties, especially like Wajir, were quite marginalized, very, very much marginalized. As I speak to you now, the 57,000 square kilometers does not have a single Tarmac, one kilometer Tarmac road. It is now, at the advent of the county government, is when we are starting to do our first Tarmac road, which has just started a few months ago.
Yeah, good. Would you bring your team up? We're going to have a photo, I think, for our...
Okay. Thank you very much.
And if the council wants to come down for their photo? Jordan, would you come up for a photo? Well, Jordan, are you ready to go with Speak Up Edina presentation on residential fire sprinklers and plastic bags?
Good evening, Mayor Hovland and city council members. My name is Jordan Goguenbach. I'm communications coordinator here for the city of Edina, and I'm presenting tonight on the November and December monthly discussions on Speak Up Edina. SpeakUpEdina.org is the city civic engagement website. We've had the website since 2012, and we've hosted a variety of different discussions on there. We started, a little background, we started really upping the use of it in 2014, as one of the city council's strategic priorities for 2014 and 2015 is civic engagement and communications. So with that, we've been hosting monthly discussions every month throughout 2014, anything from food trucks, food to liquor ratio, organized garbage hauling, all the way up to dog parks, and tonight, residential fire sprinklers and plastic bags. Throughout the year, we also had several other discussions on the site, which several of them have come to you guys in the last year, from the Fred Richards Vision, Vision Edina Sidewalk Facility Map, and others. Like I mentioned, the November discussion was on fire sprinklers. We asked questions such as whether the city should require that all homes, regardless of size, have fire sprinklers. With recent state legislature change, houses over 4,500 square feet are going to be required to have residential fire sprinklers, so we were looking to see what residents think, if it was all homes and not just those, the larger ones. The discussion was open from October 28th to December 1st, 2014. We had 33 comments on this one, several thousand visitors and page views. All of our visitors were, or all of our respondents, rather, were from Edina. Just to note, during this month, we also had discussions, active discussions going on, on the city CIP Indigenous Peoples' Day, redevelopment of the former public worksite, the sidewalk facility plan, Wooddale Valley View, and Vision Edina. So it was a very busy month on the site. Generally, we had a lot of mixed feedback on this topic throughout the month. Most of the people who were against any sort of additional regulation cited the large upfront cost of installing systems, saying that things like the discount that you could get for, from homeowner's insurance doesn't necessarily account for much, and others. Those who were for it really were promoting the unrealized benefit of it, so while you might have it and your house might not burn down, it's that feel that it could help if it ever did happen. And all of these comments for both of these discussions are all in your packet for you to review. I did have a good conversation with former Edina Fire Marshal Tom Jensen during this time, and he did want to make note that with the state's fire code, it's a mini maxi code, which means that the city can be no more or less restrictive than the state fire code. But it's still good information for us to know, in case anything like that did happen. Correct me if I'm wrong with that. And then with the December discussion, like I mentioned, it's on plastic bags. We wanted to see what residents think about banning the use of plastic bags in the city, and maybe instead of banning them altogether, what they think about doing a tax or a per-bag fee, much like businesses like IKEA do. They don't provide a plastic bag, but you can buy them for a fee. And what the city can do to better educate shoppers and retailers about the plastic bag use. This one was opened from December 1st through January 5th. We received 22 comments, just shy of 1,000 total visits, and all respondents, again, were from Edina on this one. The comments on this one, again, were very mixed. People weren't, those who were in favor of banning the plastic bags say that it's an unnecessary use for resources. It's a single-use bag. You throw it away or you recycle it. It's really just a use of resources. Others say that it's kind of government-infringing on personal rights and personal preferences and what they prefer. Those who don't want to, there are some people who didn't want to ban it, but would rather see a per-bag fee or a tax on those. Most of the discussion, or a lot of the discussion, was around encouraging retailers and educating retailers about the plastic bag waste, and either having, encouraging them to sell the reusable bags at a discount, or to require a bag drop-off for single-use plastic bags. And current, our current discussions on SpeakUpEdina.org, we're currently doing a discussion on liquor laws. Back earlier last year, we did one on changing the 60-40 rule or adjusting that slightly. We're currently looking at what residents think about eliminating that rule altogether, and just like Minneapolis did, voted out in November, and what residents think about, if that would allow taprooms and bars, how they feel about that, and what kind of concerns they have. We're also doing another discussion on the redevelopment of the former public worksite in Grandview. That one is open till the end of February. We're looking for resident input and ideas for what could go on that site as a public and private mixed development use. And with that, I'll stand for any questions on any of these topics.
Questions for Mr. Goguenbach with regard to either topic? These reports are always very informative. I'm glad you're spending the time engaging with our citizenry on these issues that come up that we believe have importance to our town, so. All right, good. Thank you very much. In the public hearing portion of the agenda this evening, we've only got one public hearing matter to deal with, and that's the potential issuance of a temporary intoxicating on-sale liquor license to Church of St. Patrick for an event that they have coming up on February 14th, 2015. Our chief of police, Dave Nelson, has this matter. Chief, welcome.
Evening, Mayor and council members. The Church of St. Patrick has applied for a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for their annual event called the Night at the Opera. The event will be held onsite in the social hall and adjoining kitchen area on February 14th from 6:15 p.m. until 9 o'clock p.m. The applicants are eligible for the liquor license and have submitted plans that meet the special requirements for a temporary license under city code. Traditionally, we have not experienced any problems in past events that they've had at the church. The Church of St. Patrick has hired Edina police to provide security that evening. I can stand for questions.
Questions for the chief?
All right.
Good. Thanks, chief.
Mr. Mayor, you said February 14th, and the agenda says February 15th. We should make sure we get it.
All right. See, on the report recommendation, the body of the document says, is it the 14th or the 15th?
I have it as the 14th.
Your honor, there's a typo on the agenda.
All right. Thanks.
Okay.
Member Stewart, thanks for that catch. All right. Any questions for the chief? Anyone here from the church that wishes to, this is a public hearing. I'm going to open it up for public testimony. First of all, is there anyone here from St. Patrick's that wants to talk about the event? Yes, sir. Please come forward. This may be more than you expected.
[laughter]
Although you have papers with you. It looks like you're somewhat prepared. Is that the agenda?
That's just the agenda.
All right. And if you give us your name and address, and then tell us a little bit about the event and why you want the license.
My name is Jeffrey Jamison. I'm the director of music and liturgy at St. Patrick's Church in Edina. And the main thing I wanted to come for was, the date was last year's date on the agenda, so I had to make sure that was correct. It is Valentine's Day. It is a, more or less, a sweetheart dinner dance with some opera and mostly big band, swing band music being performed this year. The intoxicating liquor is beer and wine being served mainly for the dinner event, and then some dancing afterwards. And it ends around 9 o'clock, because that's when most of the people go to bed. So, that's all.
Thanks, Mr. Jamison. Anybody on the council have a question for Mr. Jamison?
No.
All right. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to come forward and comment regarding this matter? Seeing no one coming forward and hearing nothing, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second to close the public hearing discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Carried. All right. Is there a motion regarding this matter?
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second to issue a temporary intoxicating on-sale liquor license to St. Patrick's Catholic Church for their event on the evening of February 14th, 2015. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Carried. All right, Mr. Jamison, you can report back. They're safe. 9 o'clock. We didn't impose a curfew, so. All right, we're moving into the next portion of the agenda, which is community comment. If there's anyone in the audience that wishes to come forward and comment regarding a matter that's not otherwise on the agenda this evening, or hasn't been on the agenda within the last 30 days, feel free to come forward. You'll have three minutes to express your concern or make your inquiry. Anyone want to come forward for community comment? All right. Seeing no one coming forward, we will move on to the next portion of the agenda, which is reports and recommendations. And our first matter there is the potential agreement with Bloomington Public Health. And Mr. Brown is, there he is. From our staff, Jeffrey Brown is the community health administrator. Welcome, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
For those of you from, well, maybe some folks from Edina too don't know this, but from Wajir, we don't have our own public health department in the city. We have a shared service that we use with our sister city to the south, which is a city called Bloomington, which is substantially larger than we are. So this is an example of a shared service conversation. Mr. Brown?
We'll explain a little bit of that in our presentation. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As I said, I'm Jeff Brown. I'm the community health administrator for the city. And also, in the large audience, is Bonnie Paulson, the administrator for Bloomington, and the assistant administrator, Lisa Brodsky. They'll be talking later. We're here tonight to review the responsibilities of our local Edina Health Division, and then also the city's contractual relationship with the city of Bloomington and their public health department, and then ask for approval to enter into contract for public health services for 2015. I'll go over a brief overview of what we do locally, and then Bonnie will take over and talk about what we contract for with the city of Bloomington. So Edina is one of four cities that's designated as a community health board in statute. The other three are Richfield, Bloomington, and Minneapolis. The council acts as the community health board, and we're addressing you in that capacity tonight. The duties listed here, they're summarized from statute. They're much longer in statute, but they are pretty broad, which do allow us the advantage of some flexibility to address things locally. So it is an advantageous thing that they are very broad. So how do we address and fulfill those duties? Basically, three channels. For more local concerns, we utilize city code ordinances that we have on the books. Also, the Minnesota Department of Health has delegated some of its more regulatory programs to the city, which I'll go through in a minute. And then also, as a community health board, we get, the city receives funding from multiple grants through, from the Minnesota Department of Health. So, what we do locally. Environmental health is the term we use to describe basically what we do in a regulatory capacity here locally. Mainly, those duties are the Food, Pools, and Lodging Licensing and Inspection Program. It's delegated to the city from the Minnesota Department of Health to perform those duties locally. It includes licensing and inspection, plan review for new facilities, or remodeling facilities, and also investigating foodborne and waterborne illness outbreaks. We've had a bit of a busy season this year with norovirus. You've heard in the news, all around the state and some here locally, we've investigated outbreaks associated with norovirus. Also, the Edina Health Division staff utilizes our statutory authority to investigate public health nuisances. Those are often generated from calls from the police department or fire department when they investigate falls or things like that with residents. And we do property maintenance code enforcement, utilizing local ordinance. We've adopted the International Property Maintenance Code for property maintenance complaints, and that can be commercial property, residential property, rental property, owned property, multi-unit housing, or single-family home. And our department is also responsible for the citywide residential recycling contract, which is in year two of a seven-year contract, a switch from dual sort to single sort, as you recall, with Republic Services. And then, some additional duties, I do act as the staff liaison to the Edina Community Health Commission. And then, we also administer four different grants from the Minnesota Department of Health. There's a local public health grant, a public health emergency preparedness grant, maternal-child health grant, which was on the consent agenda tonight, and then in a couple months, we will also see the Temporary Assistance for Needied Families grant. And then, we also administer the contract with the city of Bloomington for public health. So that's why Bonnie is here tonight. That's what I have as a brief overview. As Bonnie comes up to take over for me, if you have any questions of what we do locally, feel free to ask.
Questions for Mr. Brown at this point in time? All right. Bonnie, come on forward.
Okay. I think so.
And give us your full name and business address, please.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Paulson. I'm the public health administrator for the city of Bloomington. I live in Maple Grove. I'm sorry, did you want something else other than that?
I was going to ask for your business address, but...
Oh, I work at the city of Bloomington Public Health.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Hovland, city council members, and Mr. Neal. I went through my introduction already. As Mr. Brown noted, I'm here addressing you tonight as the board of health. The city council acts of, Edina acts as the board of health for the city of Bloomington, for the city of Edina. Since 1976, the city council has served as the community health board of Edina. Edina has provided public health services for your city under con-
And then, we also administer four different grants from the Minnesota Department of Health. There's a local public health grant, a public health emergency preparedness grant, maternal-child health grant, which was on the consent agenda tonight, and then, in a couple months, we will also see the Temporary Assistance for Needy Families grant. And then, we also administer the contract with the city of Bloomington for public health. So that's why Bonnie is here tonight. That's what I have as a brief overview, as Bonnie comes up to take over for me. If you have any questions of what we do locally, feel free to ask.
Questions for Mr. Brown at this point in time? All right. Bonnie, come on forward.
Okay. I think so.
And give us your full name and business address, please.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Paulson. I'm the Public Health Administrator for the city of Bloomington. I live in Maple Grove. I'm sorry, did you want something else other than that?
I was going to ask for your business address, but...
Oh, I work at the city of Bloomington Public Health. Good evening, Mayor Holland, City Council members, and Mr. Neal. I went through my introduction already. As Mr. Brown noted, I'm here addressing you tonight as the Board of Health. The city council acts of Edina acts as the Board of Health for the city of Bloomington, for the city of Edina. Since 1976, the city council has served as the Community Health Board of Edina. Edina has provided public health services for your city under contract with Bloomington. And we see this as an efficient way to provide those services for the three cities. We do provide public health services for Edina, and Richfield, and Bloomington. As Jeff stated, there are several requirements that have to be fulfilled under state statute, and those, he showed you some of them, but I'm going to go into them a little bit more. One of the things you need to do is identify the local public health priorities and implement activities to address those priorities. And the next slide will show you that, the list that we have done with identifying those. The other thing we need to do is submit to the Commissioner of Health a Community Health Assessment and Community Health Improvement Plan. Both of those are due to the state in February of 2015, but they've already been submitted by Bloomington on your behalf. We need to implement a performance management process in order to achieve desired outcomes, and annually report to the Commissioner on a set of performance measures, and be prepared to provide documentation of the ability for us to prepare and do those activities. And we submit that annual report every year to MDH. Jeff helps us with that reporting. He does the financial piece for us, and then Bloomington Public Health does the other reporting to the state, and they do that for all three cities, Bloomington, Edina, and Richfield. This next page here shows us, shows you the ten, top ten health issues that your Health Commission identified. They are not in order, but as the Community Health Board, every five years, you have to identify these and submit a list to the top, of the top ten community health priorities to MDH. And so those have already been submitted for you for the, this five years. To fulfill the state, to fulfill those state requirements, Bloomington Public Health delivers a wide variety of public health services to Edina residents, including services to individuals. So we do home visits, so we go out and see mom and babes. And then we also work in the community. We work at Edina Schools, Edina Family Center, the Senior Center, and the Bloomington Public Health Center. I thought this was all going to show up on one page. We do consultation with the school nurses, clinics, and childcare providers on childhood infectious diseases, safety and health, and we're a resource for Jeff as he needs them, or the school nurses. Public health programs, we participate with community partners in your city, so we work with the Edina Family Center. I probably won't read through all of them, but you can kind of see that we do through, work with your communities, trying to make sure that your residents stay healthy. We also do planning, and public health planning and reporting, and again, that's part of what your Community Health Board needs to do. We write grants to expand public health services in Edina. We implement community health assessment activities, identify and prioritize local health issues, and develop action plans. We complete reports for the Minnesota Department of Health and other grant reporting as required. The CHS assessment, this is an ongoing process for us. Sometimes we're able to fund some specific assessment activities with grant dollars, so if there's an issue that we are aware of, we try to go after specific grant dollars for those activities. Some of the highlights we had for 2014, working with Edina, Safe Routes to School, we worked with the district to complete their plan, the schoolyard garden training for schools, living streets promotion and marketing plan development. In disease prevention and control, we work with outbreak and response. You guys have had issues with pertussis in the past, I know that we worked with them on pertussis issues and other outbreaks that we've had recently. We do manto testing, we do clinic services for your residents, we do WIC, peer breastfeeding counseling, flu shots, and other immunizations for childhood. We work with your seniors, specifically, we work with the police referrals and follow-up. We do senior and vulnerability adult support and hoarding issues. So your police will call us and will say that they might need a nurse to come out and visit an elderly person, or someone that they've identified that might be at risk. And we do go out and visit with those and refer them to resources as needed. We also work with family health and seeing those moms and babies. We have a program that's called Healthy Families America. It's an intensive family home visiting, and it's research-based and evidence-based. And basically, that, we look, work with really the high-risk moms. We do childcare provider training for your childcare providers, home visiting, and early intervention. The Healthy Families America recently went through an accreditation process in December. We haven't heard the final results on that yet, but as part of that process, we are with a multiple metro area program, so we're working together on that. And then also, we've been working on a public health accreditation. Public health accreditation measures the health department's ability to perform against a set of nationally recognized practice-focused and evidence-based standards. The goal is to promote and improve the health of the public by advancing quality and performance of the health department. We have an opportunity to identify successes and areas for improvement, and it helps focus our work on common goals and continually evaluate performance and ensure that we have the greatest impact. In order to apply for this, we had to have some prerequisites in place. They were the Community Health Assessment, the Community Health Improvement Plan and Strategic Plan, the QI Plan, and also Performance Management Plan. All of those were completed, and we put our application in for accreditation in May of 2014. Since we put our application in, we did ask to be able to accredit as Bloomington, Edina, and Richfield, so that Edina could also, the Edina Public Health could also become accredited. This just gives the three cities, the Community Health Board, all of us to become accredited, gives us more weight when we're trying to apply for grants, and just saying that we are a quality public health agency. By allowing us to do this as a three-city agency, the three cities working together, it just allows Edina to become an accredited public health agency. They wouldn't be able to otherwise, because the majority of the work is done in Bloomington. So this allows us to work across that three-city, and to allow you to get accredited. I thought that was, the Public Health Accreditation Board gave us special permission for that, so that was great. We've been working on the community, the quality improvement and the performance management. The other thing we're working on in 2015, there will be a new grant application for the statewide health improvement program. We continue to work with our peer breastfeeding program. That has, we have the highest rates of initiation of breastfeeding in the state, and that's across BER, Bloomington, Edina, and Richfield. And it's also an award-winning program. We've gotten an award for that.
Bonnie, what's the strategy this year for requesting funds for SHIP from the state legislature? Are you going to try to maintain the existing level of funding, or expand it somewhat?
I think the state's plan is to continue kind of where it's at. It's been put into the general fund for the MDH. There will be an RFP that's coming out this spring. The applications will, or the grants will have to be in probably by June or July, and they will award after that. So it'll start back up October first. We're not, you know, never say never, but we're not expecting any cuts to it. We should be looking at a stable funding for that.
All right. Thank you.
And then, in emergency preparedness, things that we did in 2014, recruited more community partners to distribute medications, updated isolation and quarantine plan, worked with Fairview-Southdale Hospital on their hazard vulnerability assessment. We did multiple outreach activities, revised the Public Health Emergency Response Plan, worked with Ebola planning and isolation and quarantine. And then, 2015 activities, we're planning for a full-scale anthrax response exercise. And again, Jeff will be working with us with that. And then also, we're working on getting Edina considered a heart-safe community, and so we're making steps to do that.
What does that mean? Edina, heart-safe, a heart-safe community, what is it?
It's basically saying that you have made steps to make, that you're looking at where the AEDs are, making sure that you have enough AEDs, making sure a lot of people are trained in CPR, so that you can kind of say that we have more of an ability to respond in case somebody has a heart attack or heart issue.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, I guess that's all I have. Do you have questions for me?
Member Brindle.
Thank you. In looking at the agreement, in item number ten, several pages into the agreement, Bloomington also agrees to send Edina an annual report describing public health services. Said report shall be in such detail and form as Edina may reasonably request. In the next sentence, "Also at Edina's request, made no more than two," should that be "make no more than two," make no more than two times during...
No, it's correct.
Okay. "Also at Edina's request, made no more than two times during the term in this agreement, reasonable administrative officers of Bloomington's Division of Public Health shall attend meetings of the Edina City Council or the Health Commission." Why only two?
I, like, I'm new to Bloomington too. I'm not sure why they set that. I, I'm open to coming as frequently as you would like me to come.
Okay.
The, I mean, if you want me here monthly, I can come.
Well, it, looking at, I served on the Health Commission some time ago, and we were not forward-thinking at that time. Now we are forward-thinking, and there are issues that the Health Commission looks at, and looks at vertically, deeply, and then comes forward with a recommendation on, such as e-cigarettes. And the, and the topic, I communicated with Allison Pence today, the topic for 2015 is adult binge drinking. And so, looking at that, understanding it, and addressing it. And if, in looking at things deeply like that, I think it would be nice if we had the opportunity to have more than two. That just kind of jumped out at me and went, "Two? Why two? Because we're looking at things that we can do together, so hoping that we would have more opportunity to collaborate in person."
Definitely, and we're open to whatever you need, I guess. And I have been to the Commission twice in 2014, but again, I'm, you know, open to whenever you guys would like me to come.
Okay. The flu shot clinics?
Yes.
We got missed this year in the clinics, and Bloomington and Richfield had clinics, but not Edina, and we have had a rash of influenza in our schools. And so, it came to my attention that we were missed, and so I wanted to find out how that happened, and was it staffing, was it money, what was it that caused that?
I believe it was, we contacted the schools, and we were never, we never could get it scheduled. They never called us back to schedule, and so it just didn't happen. So we can be a little more aggressive next year, and hopefully get that to happen.
Okay.
But I also have to have that partner work with us.
Well, and we can bring that message forward as well. So I appreciate knowing that.
And it might have just been something that the ball got dropped somewhere, but that was my understanding of it.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, those are my questions. Thank you.
Other questions for Bonnie or for Jeff?
I did want you, I don't know if all of you had gotten this, this was the annual report, and I thought there were some that maybe hadn't gotten it.
Mr. Brown, do you want to, do you want to state what the action is that you're requesting from the council this evening?
Basically, we need approval for the mayor and the city manager to sign the agreement.
All right. And this agreement would involve $203,645 in cost, which is a 2.5% increase from 2014. Those costs are offset by Edina's 2015 local public health grant funding of approximately $118,900, and then the rest of it comes in the way of a match from us as a community, which is required by the Local Public Health Act.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any, did that prompt any questions from the council members, or we entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to renew the community services agreement with Bloomington Public Health Division for $203,645 for the calendar year 2015. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Carried. Thank you. Bonnie, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
All right. I suspect the next item is why all of you are here, the bee and chicken ordinance. And we have Diane Puncat Latham with us this evening, who's done a lot of work on this. And we're going to hear about why we should allow beekeeping and allow the keeping of, I see you've got it characterized as fowl, not chickens, but...
Is there time she has for recitations? Mayor?
I told her she had twenty minutes.
Ms. Dawn? Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to address the Edina City Council on behalf of the Energy and Environment Commission's proposal to permit honeybee keeping and up to four female chickens. The objective, EEC seeks to remove restrictions on keeping honeybees and female domesticated chickens consistent with the Green Step Cities Recommendation Local Food Best Practice Number 27. Edina is a part of the Green Step Cities, of which 75 cities are members. Nearly all of our neighboring cities allow honeybee keeping, with the exception of Richfield. Hopkins, Bloomington, Eden Prairie, Minneapolis, St. Louis Park, all permit honeybee keeping. Our ordinance is based on the Eden Prairie ordinance. Cities allowing female chickens on our borders are Bloomington, Minneapolis, and St. Louis Park. Why allow honeybees? It's a source of honey. U.S. honey production meets only half of U.S. honey demand. Minnesota is one of the five top honey-producing states in the United States. Why allow honeybees? They are efficient pollinators of garden flowers, fruits, vegetables. With fewer bees, there will be less produce and more misshapen fruits. You're looking at a tomato that is not completely pollinated. Why allow honeybees? Bees produce one-third of the food at our grocery store. China, Pakistan, India, Nepal must hand-pollinate apple and pear trees due to the loss of natural pollinators. All pollinators, including honeybees, are in serious decline in the United States. If we did not have bees to pollinate crops like our apple trees, the price would be at least double what it is now, assuming we could even find enough workers to pollinate our orchards. Why allow honeybees? It will educate residents on the need to reduce pesticides and the need to landscape using plants with food for pollinators. Those are the two most important things that we can do to encourage pollinators. This in turn helps all pollinators, including native bees, butterflies, and moths, which are in worldwide decline. Beekeeping is also an interesting hobby that teaches kids responsibility, where their foods come from, as well as about the natural world. And this inspires them to leave the environment in a better place than it was when they took it over. It's also a property rights issue. Residents should be able to make reasonable use of their property, as long as it does not negatively unduly impact their neighbors. Why allow female chickens? It's a source of fresh eggs, it's a high-quality fertilizer, and it provides integrated pest management. Chickens eat harmful insects, such as Japanese beetles, slugs, and wood ticks, among many others. And it results in reduced pesticide use. They're also good companion animals, they're friendly, will sit on your lap, follow you around, and so forth. Once again, it's a property right issue of people being able to use their property in a manner that does not unduly impact their neighbors. It also teaches kids responsibility, where their food comes from, and gives them a connection to the natural world, so that they will continue to maintain the environment, hopefully at higher levels than where they found it. Proposed ordinance requirements for apiaries. The apiary registration will be required with the Police Department. Understand, this is a registration, not a license. It is a... It is a registration like domestic partners, not a license like marriage or a dog license, and this subjects the city to less liability. We will require an initial inspection to verify the conformity with the required setback, and we'll talk about the setback requirements in a bit here. They also have a water source requirement, and this is so that the bees will not go to their neighbor's bird bath or swimming pool, for example. Water source must be on their own property. There's a limit to the number of colonies, and we'll talk about that in a moment, and there also is a requirement of Edina residency. We're not trying to keep bees of people who don't live in Edina on residents' property. This is just for residents. There's a minimal registration fee, $20 is proposed, and this is because letters will be sent to neighbors within 200 feet. Now, Eden Prairie does not require any registration fee, and we hope that council would consider that because we want to encourage as many people as possible to keep bees. There will be an annual renewal, no renewal fee because no letters are sent out, and the reason we have registration and renewal is so that the police department knows where these hives are. The police sometimes have to chase perpetrators or wild animals at night, and we don't want them bumping into the bee hives. Now, we don't expect that there will be a lot of these colonies. Eden Prairie, the first year, had 11 registrations. They currently have 13 with two pending, so it's not likely to be a huge thing, but we do want people to be able to do it. And as I indicated, there's a courtesy notification of neighbors within 200 feet of the lot line. Apiary setback requirements, an apiary cannot be located in the front yard. There's a 20-foot setback from dwellings on adjacent property, a 20-foot setback from a public sidewalk, and in general, a 10-foot lot line setback provided the other three are not impacted. In fact, a 5-foot setback is sufficient. Bees only fly out about three feet from the hive and then immediately go into the air and take their GPS setting, if you would, to determine where the sun is so they can find their way home. Eden Prairie has only a 10-foot lot line setback. The setback is immaterial as to how many bees the neighbors will have in their yard. If the neighbors are planting things that have pollen and honey, the bees will go to that yard regardless of what the setback is. Bees forage for two square miles, so we already have many honeybees in Edina, and I find them on a daily basis in my backyard, along with many other kinds of bees. Colony density limitations, what you're looking at there is three colonies. This constitutes one apiary, and these requirements are virtually the same as Eden Prairie's. A half acre or smaller, two colonies. A half to third acre, three-quarters acre, four colonies. Three-quarters acre to one acre, six colonies. More than an acre, eight, and if all lots within a 200 foot of any lot line are undeveloped, then 12 colonies. Eden Prairie has no limit in that situation. I'm not sure that we have any lots that are completely bounded by undeveloped property, but we put it in there just in case. Apiary registration would be granted if the colony is code compliant, that is, the number of colonies, the setback, the water source, and if they are a resident of Edina. It is not dependent on neighbor comments. If it were dependent on neighbor comments, it could be denied simply for no other reason than spite. However, we do have an appeal process. Residents within 200 feet of the apiary lot line can appeal a registration once granted. And the recommended policy for conditions for registration revocation based on neighbor appeal would be a doctor's note stating that a household resident is specifically allergic to honeybee stings. There are over 400 kinds of bees in the state of Minnesota, and just because you're allergic to one does not mean you are allergic to them all or allergic to honeybee stings. Another reason for revoking a registration is the apiary has become a habitual nuisance due to improper maintenance or despite prior city-written warnings. Appeal decision options, confirm the registration, or rescind the registration, or mediate. And mediate options include changing the apiary location, requiring a flyway barrier, and that is a six-foot-high barrier that the bees can't fly through like a wall, a fence, or dense vegetation, or any other mutually acceptable solution. Now, those that do have-
Ms. Latham?
Yes?
Is it, is it the intention of the ordinance and the Energy and Environment Commission that any denial, revocation, or suspension, or appeal by a neighbor be heard by the city council?
No, no. It would be up to the city manager, who could then appoint a representative if the city manager did not want to hear it personally. Presumably, the person who is granting these registrations would probably be the animal control officer, would be the one who would hear that, but that would be entirely up to the city manager.
All right, thank you. Is that clear in the ordinance?
Yes, it should be.
All right.
And if it's not, we can certainly make it clear. Options for those who are allergic to bee stings, first of all, you can landscape with flowers that have no honey or pollen and which do not attract bees, any bees, and that could include daylily, tulip, daisy, impatience, marigolds, petunias, there are a lot of flowers like that. And you can avoid flowers that attract pollinators, for example, sedum, zinnia, oregano, Meyer lemon, or native plants. Virtually all Minnesota native plants will attract pollinators, so that is a category you could stay away from. Other things those that are allergic to bee stings can do, you can carry an EpiPen for immediate treatment of anaphylaxis. Now, it turns out that the Eden Prairie person who is responsible for enforcing their ordinance does have a child who is subject to anaphylaxis, but he did not regard this as a problem because the likelihood of a sting from a honeybee, because they are hybridized to be gentle, because that is so low. And his son, who is subject to bee stings, you would have to carry that EpiPen whether or not you had a neighbor that would happen to have honeybees. You always have to have that on you. Now, you could also get shots to remediate the allergy. My sister is subject to bee anaphylaxis as well. I don't know what kind of bee. In those days, we didn't figure that out, but she did get the allergy shots, and now she has no problem. And last, but perhaps most important, you need to be respectful of honeybees and all bees, and if you don't harass them, for the most part, they are not going to bother you. Okay, apiary and customary home occupation. Honey cannot be sold from the home, but could be sold from other venues such as a farmer's market, and the same applies to eggs. As a consequence, these are not listed under permissible home occupations. Now, we'll talk a bit about chickens. Here you can see a typical chicken coop and a chicken run. A chicken run is a structure that you use that protects your chicken when it's out in the yard. Hawks are very quick to look for something like a chicken that can't fly too well, as do dogs, cats, coyotes, and fox. So, chicken owners would typically either be out in the yard with the animal, as they are with a small dog or fox, or have it in one of these chicken runs. Limitations that we're proposing on keeping female chickens, a maximum of four hens. Roosters remain prohibited. Roosters crow, hens do not. Hen house and chicken run setback, that default would be the same as our current animal enclosure. It shall not exceed 300 square feet in area and shall be placed only in the rear yard and no closer than 20 feet from any property line. This animal enclosure restriction does not apply to honeybees because they are not enclosed. They are free to come and go 24/7. Nothing encloses them. Okay, the first major misconception, that chickens are noisy. In fact, hens do not crow like roosters, but make a soft clucking sound. We brought a hen to the council work session, and one of the council members commented that the house runs and mourning doves in their yard make more sound than a hen does. Misconception number two, all honeybees are aggressive. Now, you will notice here, there's a picture of Dr. Marla Spivak, director of the U of M B Lab, and Gary Ruder, scientist at the U of M B Lab. Gary Ruder is here in the audience, and he'll make a few quick comments after me. But what they've done here has created a bee beard where by putting a queen bee under their chin in a box, the whole hive is drawn over to them. The hive follows the queen bee and landed on them. They are not being stung. This is how up close and personal you can get with this many honeybees and not be stung. Yellow jackets are aggressive, especially around plates of food. Hornets are aggressive. None of the honeybees eat what the hornets and yellow jackets do. Hornets and yellow jackets are interested in people food. Honeybees are only interested in pollen and nectar, so they generally don't come to you, unless you've got their queen. Most other native bees, such as bumblebees, go about their business without bothering anyone either. Public places where we have honeybee colony locations, Minneapolis City Hall Rain Gardens, Weisman Art Museum roof, Four Seasons Hotel, Paris Opera House roof, the White House, Fairmont Copely Plaza in Boston. Honeybees are not bothering anyone there. I think they'd be safe in our backyards, too. And now, we have, Jennifer, you might have to help me operate this. I have a quick demonstration. Edina resident, Dr. Jeffrey Bedow is here in the audience. This is his apiary in Taylor's Falls, and he is showing you how bees do not react when you lob projectiles at them. They're used to having hail, tree branches, and whatnot fall on their hives, and they simply do not react. So, lot line setback is not a-
This is a Nerf ball. This is a baseball. This is a soccer ball. This is a volleyball. This is a four-square ball.
Jeff has a lot of sports. And if you want to sit down and have a drink and sit by your beehive all day long and watch them coming and going, you can do it without any provocation. Okay, Jennifer, how do I? The aggressive bees are yellow jackets and bald-faced hornets. They're the ones that will sting you. People often confuse them with honeybees, even though they don't look like a honeybee. A honeybee can sting but once, it loses its stinger, and then it dies, and so it is very judicious about stinging. Also, bumblebees are often confused, and they are very gentle, too. In fact, we have, we have a member of the task force in the audience who pets bumblebees. They are so tame. Misconception three, if you're allergic to one kind of bee sting, you're allergic to every kind of bee sting. That isn't the case. There are over 400 kinds of bees, and the allergies are all very specific. So, now, we've got, from the U of M B Lab, Gary Ruder, who'll just say a few words, and then you can direct questions to either Gary or myself. Gary?
All right, thanks. Dr. Ruder, welcome.
Thank you. Evening, mayor, members of the council. I'm Gary Ruder. I'm from the University of Minnesota B Lab, 1980, Fawell Avenue, St. Paul. So, you can all mail me. So, basically, we study honeybees and native bees at the university. Our main goal is looking at honeybee health, and that's our research, but also, we have an extension part of our job there, and we teach people how to be beekeepers, how to keep their bees healthy, and one of the things that I do is come around and help city councils and cities work with beekeepers to keep bees in the city if they want to. I kept bees. I've been a beekeeper for 30 years. I've been at the university for 22 years. I started beekeeping in the city of St. Paul. I had my bees in the backyard. Interestingly enough, my wife is allergic to bee stings, honeybee stings specifically, and I got bees. I got a life insurance policy on her, and I still haven't collected. So, we're happily married. So, and, you know, she doesn't work with the bees, obviously, because that's dangerous, but they're right in our backyard. She loves to garden. She's out in there with the flowers and everything, and she's not been stung in our yard in all that time. At the university, our bees are right on the corner of Cleveland and Larpenter, if you know where that is, a very busy intersection. We're right next to the soccer fields, which are the intramural soccer fields, and we're across the street from the golf course. I'm not going to say there was never, ever a problem there, but there was never a problem of a size that we ever got word back that somebody got stung or was upset or anything like that. So, bees are very comfortable in the city. We have a bee squad, which started a couple of years ago, where we keep bees around the city in different areas. We have about 50 colonies in cities, right in people's backyards, and we have not had an issue with that, okay? Over the past five years, we have taught in excess of 2,000 new beekeepers, okay? Some of them have their bees in the city, some don't, but you can imagine, if any of those have issues, we would hear about it, and we have not heard about, I've not had a single call where anybody said, "Hey, you gotta help me because I'm having an issue." Okay? And so, I reviewed the ordinance that you guys put together, and I think you've addressed all of the things that neighbors have problems with, okay? I have learned, not everybody loves bees as much as I do, okay? And so, there are neighbors out there that are going to say, "What are you, crazy?" And I think I am, but not for that reason. But you've addressed, I think, all of the issues that we usually come up with that neighbors have, and with that, I'm going to leave it with that unless somebody has specific questions. I can answer tonight. Feel free to contact me if something comes up later. We're there to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ruder. Questions for either Dr. Ruder or Diane?
I do.
Mary? No?
I'm just, yes, I do. I just have one question, and that is, where did the language for the ordinance come from? Is it modeled after somebody else's ordinance?
Eden Prairie. It's taken pretty much straight from Eden Prairie, and Eden Prairie is based on the Minnesota Hobby Beekeeper Association model ordinance.
Okay.
So, they adapted it, and then we further tweaked Eden Prairie's ordinance, which was implemented a year ago practically tonight.
Okay. All right, well, other than, I mean, I think, I'll make a motion that we, we accept this ordinance, 2015-02, on a first-reading basis. There are some wordsmithing things that I think can be worked out, so I think first reading is what I'd like to propose.
Let's get a second, and then we'll go to more discussion.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right.
I have some questions, Ms. Maran. Thank you, Ms. Plunkett Latham, for your work on this, and please pass along our appreciation to the Energy and Environment Commission. I know you all have worked very hard on this. Couple of questions on the bee ordinance. You know, I noticed the provision on appeal, but what, and I understand that the city manager or his designee makes the decision on the appeal, but I wasn't able to find anything in the ordinance that guides the decision-maker on the appeal. What standards or criteria are in place to help them make that decision?
In the report, we recommend a policy. Now, a policy is different than what is actually in the ordinance. If you want to put that in the ordinance, you certainly can. Eden Prairie does not. I think usually, your policies are in a separate book, and the city would decide on those separately, and they could be modified as you go along, as you find greater need. So, for that reason, I kept them offline. We have them recommended in the report, but then-
So, I'm sorry to interrupt, but where is it in the report? I see the appeal provision on page five of the report in the proposed Edina beekeeping registration process, but I just wasn't able to find any criteria or standards that are applied to determine whether an appeal should be granted or not. applied to determine whether an appeal should be granted or not.
Appeal is at the top of page five, top of page five.
I see that there. But, you know, it just talks about meeting with them, hearing from them, trying to mediate, trying other strategies, but doesn't, I don't see any standard that determines how to judge whether to grant the appeal or not.
I think in here somewhere we state that it is not enough to say that you are allergic to bee stings. You have to be specifically either allergic to honeybees, or that they have to find that it is a nuisance.
All right. Well, I think that probably bears more investigation. I read it pretty closely, and I wasn't really able to find any criteria or standards.
But we can work with the city manager on drafting policy along those lines.
I'm sure he or his designee would like some guidance as to how to make a decision on that. With respect to the chickens, we got an email today from a resident who I think has been tracking this and asked some pretty good questions about humane handling. I noticed that we have a maximum size for the chicken coop, but we don't have a minimum size. Is that anything that the commission thought about or talked about as you considered that ordinance?
That is not something we considered. I don't recall seeing minimum size in other cities. Typically, these are family pets, and they're treated very well.
Not in the letter we got from...
So Mr. Ross Pletzer sent us an email today, and he was sharing some experiences that weren't as humane, and so I think that's another area that we ought to be...
Now, we do say that the city's existing ordinances and the state existing ordinances do apply, and for that reason, we have not written them into here. There are animal humane statutes that would apply, so I don't know that we have to put so much in our particular ordinance, because they do exist. I think it's a state statute.
In terms of, does the ordinance prohibit slaughtering, or is that a permitted activity?
No, that issue came up before planning, and we took that up before the Energy and Environment Commission and decided that we would leave that as a possibility. Eden Prairie does so, and that's because at some point, the chicken is too old to lay eggs, if that's what they got it for, or perhaps it becomes disabled. You do not want them falling back onto the Humane Society, and slaughtering would be the most humane way to take care of that. And some people may want the chicken for food. They don't want animals that have been treated with antibiotics and hormones and so forth.
And are there state regulations or other regulations regarding the disposal?
Not that I am aware of. Some cities permit it, some don't. I don't think it is something that would come up very often. As I indicated, these typically become family pets, and it's probably not a very likely issue.
All right. Thank you. I have no further questions.
Member Swenson?
Currently, I'm strongly in support of the honeybee proposal. I'm not as comfortable with what we've stated for protection for chickens. So there's more than just a little wordsmithing for me that needs to be done with that. I think some of the things that Member Stottin just brought up are certainly concerns. I think it's very nice to say that everyone will love them as pets, but I've had people that have dogs in their backyard in a very small enclosure, run a five-foot chain with no water, and I didn't notice any love for those dogs. So I'm not comfortable just saying that I'm going to assume that the chickens will be well cared for and disposed of properly. I think I need something more than that.
Are you saying that you want the ordinance to apply to dogs also, and that you want to duplicate the state humane laws?
No, I didn't say that. I said what I want is something clear for our expectations for how chickens are handled in the yard.
If the state humane laws relative to pets or animals pertain to this, we should know that and see it. So we'd want to see that, I think. I support Member Swenson's notion that, you know, the best practices, the most humane practices with respect to chickens may be embodied in the state statute, but it sure isn't embodied in this proposed ordinance. So I wouldn't support the chicken portion of the ordinance tonight either. The beekeeping portion of it, I would support on a first reading basis. Member Stewart?
Member Swenson has articulated precisely my view of these. I strongly endorse the beekeeping provisions. The chickenkeeping, I think Mr. Pletzer has done a very nice job of alerting us to some serious concerns, and I think we ought to have those addressed before we approve that chickenkeeping provision.
If you could forward those to me, I'd be happy to take a look.
Member Stottin, your thoughts? Any additional thoughts?
I'd act with those. I'm just thinking about how to, we have a motion in a second and how to reform that in a way that...
We could either vote on it, or we could withdraw.
No, I can withdraw it. I actually did that probably too early, so I can withdraw it, and we can reconsider.
Who had the second?
I had the second. I agree with that. I guess maybe I would propose a motion to approve the beekeeping ordinance with, as a first reading, with the request that language be added to include some standards for the appeal to be brought in front of us at the second reading.
Second?
My view on the standards is that they not be egregious to the person who's objecting to it. So I think if you're asking for someone to go through allergy testing to prove what their bee sting allergy is, I have a bee sting allergy. I can't tell you what kind of bee sting allergy it is. I've never been tested for it, but I carry an EpiPen. If I live next door to a house, I'm not going to, personally, I'm not going to object, but I just think to ask someone to take on additional costs, medical costs, to prove what their bee sting allergy is, I'm not interested in going to that level personally, but maybe the rest of my council feel differently.
Let's take a look at that issue between first and second reading as well. I think that's an important comment that you made.
I mean, bees are in the world, and I think on the whole, they're a good thing that contribute positively to the world, and for those who have the allergy, it's my view that that is, you know, something that they need to deal with. And for those who want to keep bees, I think it really should not impact them very much, unless it's really some extraordinary circumstance.
And I, I mean, I think we need to strike the right balance, but we shouldn't have an appeal provision if there's no standard to go with it. If there's not going to be a way to undo it, we should just dispense with the appeal provision. But if there is a way to, as a pragmatic matter, you know, be able to kind of come up with some standards that can satisfy everyone's interests, I think that's a good idea.
Well said. With respect to the chicken provisions, it may be that state law already provides the kinds of protections that Mr. Pletzer was asking for. I just don't know that. I haven't seen it, so I have a hard time approving it without knowing that those protections are in place.
All right. You've got a little bit of guidance here. I think we're going to vote on Member Stottin's motion as stated, dealing with the bees only, and the requirement that a comeback between first and second reading for some standards for the appeal. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carrie?
And then, do you need, is there anything more we need to do on the chicken portion of it?
On the chicken portion of the ordinance, we should send that back with directions, I believe.
Yeah, and I think what Mr. Pletzer had provided at least is good...
Give a copy of that, here?
Yeah. It's at least good for considering and trying to figure out. He, I think, does reference some other standards as well, and that might be helpful, and maybe we don't need to repeat them, or maybe we just need to reference them.
And I can give you a copy of his email if you'd like it.
Thank you.
I'll have you pick that up. So is there a motion, is there a motion to send the bee, send the chicken portion of the proposed ordinance back to the Energy and Environment Commission with a directive to look at the guidelines for the best and humane practices aspects?
Some of.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carrie?
Thank you.
These standards will be important for the chief appeal officer.
Yes, they will.
The chief bee decider. Now you can join me. I'm the chief weed inspector.
I'll trade you.
Thank you for this opportunity.
All right. If you'd like this, Ms. Plunkett-Latham, I can hand it to you. Could approach the dais. There you go. Thank you. Thank you. Good to see you. Thanks for all this work. All right. We've got something, I think, real interesting coming up here, which is the Wooddale Valleyview
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
Yep. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name is Susan Lee. I'm a member of the Planning Commission, and also with my co-commissioner, Commissioner Arlene Forrest, we're co-chairs for the Small Area Planning Team for Wooddale and Valleyview. So I'm pleased to be here tonight to give you an update of our progress. As you may know, that the Wooddale Valleyview area was actually one of the first areas identified by the council to undergo a small area plan study. And because of that, I believe our committee took to heart, aside from producing the small area plan itself, we are really looking at this as a template for the process that any future small area plan would take for the city. So should a future area be identified, the same process would be in place. So I just want to take you through a little bit of the background of how we got here today. I think the process is worth reviewing a little bit. I think what we've learned so far is that setting a clear schedule and expectations from the very beginning is critical. We had a nine-month timeframe, and indeed, we are still on schedule, which I am very pleased to report. We began with a kickoff meeting in June, which was well attended by 70 or plus, so residents. Quickly, we moved to identify our small area and planning team members, and they were able to be involved in the selection of the consulting team and go through the interview process. So from there, we worked into the months of August and September to develop a work plan and focused a lot on looking at how we would do the public engagement piece. That was critical for garnering the information and input of all the stakeholders. We took October and November and December and actually had one meeting a month, which was an outreach, public, open meeting. And these focused on areas of discovery and visioning or dream, and then a final update. So as you can see right now, we are just coming out of what we're calling sort of identifying and reviewing the draft plan elements. And in fact, we have, as a small area planning team, received the draft copy of the plan and are currently reviewing it and providing comments back for our consulting team. So our hope is to, obviously, I'll be going before the, reporting to the Planning Commission on this, and then coming back to the Planning Commission and the city council in March, hopefully to get final approval of the plan, which would then become an amendment to our comprehensive plan. So I'm just going to talk a little bit about how we have structured this. We always like to enter into sort of a discussion of what is the benefit of the small area plan? When would you identify one to actually take place? The benefit of it, obviously, is that we want to focus and gain a better understanding of the neighborhood issues and some of the concerns of the stakeholders and residents involved. It is to establish the future vision for that area, and it would be based on the community input. So this gives us a jumpstart and a lead into the process before any proposals or anything land on our desk for consideration. Based on that, that becomes a roadmap to achieve that community vision and keep us on track. Within that, there's going to be land, specific land use regulations, more specific than the comp plan, to guide that development. And obviously, the goal is to improve the quality of life and complement the city's comprehensive plan goals. The purpose of the small area plans are not to obviously guarantee when, where, or what the changes are that will occur. Obviously, it can't, because many of our properties involved are private properties, private owners, private homes. The plan does not force current businesses or residences to change or relocate. There is no plan to provide funding for any new projects or amenities, and it does not mandate building design. One of the questions that often come up, and will probably come up any time a small area plan is even considered, is why now? For our specific project, it was really, came down to the age of the infrastructure. That area is primarily 50s era, 60s era buildings, and most of them have reached the end of their sort of useful life. So it's not unlikely that we will see proposals for development in that area. So this was an opportunity to be proactive in that and develop the small area plan ahead of time. I just wanted to review that, obviously, the plan is to be laid out in relationship to the comp plan, and we would focus on the same plan topic headings as the comp plan to make it easier to refer to. The green arrows here refer specifically to the topics that our plan will correlate well with. And obviously, any small area plan is going to be specific to that small area and may or may not use all of these topics. But our plan will have further provisions for the vision, goals, and objectives of that area. It has taken a closer look at the neighborhood profile. We have specific land use and community design recommendations coming forth. Transportation in that area has been considered, as well as taking a future look to the economic vitality of the area. The small area plan process will have three phases, and it's pretty intuitive. The start-up, I kind of already mentioned and alluded to. We obviously now are just coming out of the end of the planning process, which is the key and central portion of any small area plan. It is the most critical part, and I would say out of those elements listed there, the community engagement piece is probably 50% or more of the success in the planning process, and the data synthesization and the draft plan make up the other half. So if the community engagement piece is done properly, done well, the rest of the data and the draft plan become easy. So the plan approval portion is what we're now hopefully moving closer to, and the goal would be, obviously, that if we start off in this process, that the goal is to have it approved. Many stakeholders and volunteers, staff time, hours go towards this process. Obviously, we want a plan that ultimately the council will approve as an amendment to the community, to the comprehensive plan. The issue of roles becomes central to sort of how this thing all works and functions. We were very, very fortunate in this case to have great staff guidance and leadership on this. I think Karen Kurt took a big lead on sort of laying out the outline for how this process might work, and then we continue to tweak it and kind of go back to it to see, indeed, did that work, or is that not as relevant? So even though initially, everything starts with the city council giving the decree to do this. do this process, eventually, we hope to send it back to you in a form that is obviously easily, will be well-received and approved. Our planning team was well-versed on sort of the responsibilities, and out of these six items that were defined as their responsibilities for being on the team, I would probably have to say that the second one, being a champion for the project within the area, was probably one of the most crucial, critical, and probably most successful. I think by having a mix of residents and business members from the area landed credibility to this team, and every time we met, I just felt that the ownership of the plan was growing. So that ultimately, I think what we're going to have for you is really something that all of us feel very much responsible for, even though it's primarily provided by the consulting team. So probably the other one would be on, the first one, advise on best methods to achieve public participation. We had great feedback and great suggestions from our resident members, and many of them took active participation, presenting portions of the outreach program and spearheading or organizing elements of it. So that was, that was actually very, very positive. Our consultant team was unique in that it was actually four individuals who each are strong in their own way and professionals in their own fields. So it was very much an interdisciplinary team that came together to respond to this proposal. Our team reviewed their qualifications and, in some ways, felt that they were equal or better than some of the other teams specifically for that reason, because they could bring their own unique viewpoints. All of them, however, had private sector experience and with a focus heavily on walkable neighborhood design. And the intent of that and the attraction, I think, to this small area planning team was that the Wooddale Valley View area clearly is in the midst of a very residential area. And many people felt that if it were to survive, it is really going to have to look strong at options for other-than-car arrival in order to survive. So just to define a little bit about the identified area, initially, it was just loosely defined as the intersection of Wooddale and Valley View Road. Once our consultants were on board, they were able to help us flesh out and identify more or less the commercial and multifamily areas that would be included in the area, as well as identifying the borders of the residential areas. It is roughly 11 acres in size, so that's very small. If you are going to be considering future small area plans, this would probably be one of the smaller. But we, I felt that, in some ways, we were very fortunate to be able to have this opportunity to run through the process on a smaller area. The land uses include, on the northwest corner, a small retail shopping center, which has that Snuffy's, and right now, a vacant gas station. There are office and retail buildings that anchor the other corners. There's apartment buildings primarily on the south side, and I think housing mostly on the north, south, east, south, south side, as well as some wetlands. After collecting most of the data, I think what this, this part shows is that we are finally now drifting a little bit into what the draft report is going to focus on. Our consultants landed on these organizing principles that, in some ways, can be looked at as a checklist, potentially, for us, members of the planning commission or the city council, when we indeed have to review growth or projects or projected development in this area. So I'm just going to run through very quickly the organizing principles. And again, through the report, most of the recommendations are going to be based on this and with this as the foundation. So, place. The study area should be recognizable as a place and be visually attractive. Gathering. There should be a place for the people to spend their leisure time, whether it's in a commercial or a public setting. There should be neighborhood businesses. There should be businesses that provide goods or services desired in the neighborhood, including small offices. Yet the mount and configuration of the commercial space should be allowed to adjust in response to the market. Likewise, housing. Sites should be allowed to transition to housing from business use in response to the changing market demands. Height and size of buildings. Future buildings may be one to three stories, depending on their location relative to single-family housing. That comes as no surprise, and much of this does reinforce our current comprehensive plan. Correspondingly, graceful transitions. A graceful transition should be a single, should be, should occur between single-family homes and the adjacent commercial areas. Parking. Most residential parking should be in attached garages or underground, again, similar to our comp plan. Street edges. Buildings should be located and brought up near to the sidewalk without intervening parking. There should be trees between the curb and the sidewalk, and that's reaching out to try to create more of a pedestrian experience. And again, what we're hoping to not get are these open spaces that are primarily parking The consultant team took a look at traffic and circulation and felt that there needs to be additional focus on how this area connects with the surrounding neighborhood. So again, walking paths, biking paths, catching public transportation, whatever that might be, bus, in the study area needs to be safe, accessible, obvious, visible, well-lit. The area should be very well-linked to the nearby neighborhood so that those ones who can benefit will be able to use it. So getting back to the schedule, I'm hoping, going forward now, that we, I'm going to have a visit or update my fellow planning commissioners, along with Arlene. And then, next month, we will be posting the draft small area plan for public review and public comment. We will collect all those comments, and these will be forwarded to the consultants. Through the end of February, we will be expecting the consultants to integrate those comments, make revisions, tweak the plan a little bit. And our hope is, by the end of February, that we're having our first public hearing in front of the planning commission, and then moving on to an early March public hearing with the city council, and then hopefully, approval. So I didn't get too much into the plan, but again, we're just getting that ourselves, so I'd be happy to answer any questions related to that, my presentation so far.
Commissioner Lee. Members Swanson?
More of a comment. The fact that this area was studied was actually something that we designated in our comp plan. So we had a few areas in our city that we decided that would have small area plans. One is 44th and France. One is 50th and France. One has the Cahill node of retail and restaurants at 70th and Cahill. One is Grandview, which we did in a different fashion, and now this Valley View and Wooddale. So this is really our second small area plan, but these are all designated areas specific to what's in our comp plan. And I enjoyed watching it, since I live in a walkable part to this neighborhood, so.
That's correct.
Other questions for the commissioner or comments at this point in time?
Yeah, I just, I want to chime in. It's good to see my former colleague, Commissioner Lee, and Commissioner Forrest lurking in the back, and want to commend them on their work on this, and they have put in countless hours in leading a really great community engagement process. And, you know, one of the things I want to point out is that we've been working to try to continually refine and evolve the process of community engagement. And we did some with Grandview. We did another version when we did some residential redevelopment work in the zoning code, and I think this is another example of another step. And also want to commend Assistant Manager Kurt on her work. She's been terrific in putting together a model and really trying to learn from what we had done in the past to continually streamline this. And I think it's an example of the kind of ways that stakeholders can work together to plan the future. And so you had commissioners, but you had residents from the neighborhood, you had business owners, you had property owners, all working toward a common goal. And I know I went over and, and kind of participated in one of the planning meetings, and I thought it was terrific on a Saturday morning. Snuffy's opened up, served some great egg sandwiches, and people got to kind of participate and share their thoughts, and I thought you did a great job of reaching out to those folks. So I'm really looking forward to this coming back. As Member Swanson said, this is kind of a model we've been trying to work on in terms of potential areas of change, and I think it's a really promising sign for how we keep refining the way that we're, we're leading, but we're also engaging, and I think those are good solutions for the community.
Member Forrest, would you stand up as well, so folks can see? No, thank you.
I will chime in here and say thank you to you and to Arlene, and to all the people who have taken time. And we talked during the work session earlier about how, in community engagement, so many of you invest your time in helping us kind of chart the future, future for whatever it is we're working on. And it's much appreciated. We wouldn't be able to get where we go without knowing what the, you know, what the opinions are and finding where, you know, what works in the midst of all that, because there is always a range. Just one question, and that is, the business owners in the current strip mall, were they engaged in this at all?
Yes, they were. In fact, they hosted our first workshop, so we met there, and Snuffy's just walked over with the sandwiches. So I think that even the business owners realize that, in some ways, this really benefits them a lot. They're very curious to see this report as well, because it's obviously data for them about the future. So I think maybe that's what I'm sensing, is that the stakeholders really feel the stake. You know, they hold the stake. And same with homeowners. We had several homeowners that are new homeowners in the area. The interest and the enthusiasm is very high, so.
Member Stewart?
Yeah. In the fall, I attended an open house on this small area plan that was held at the Dyna Senior Center, and I thought the sense of engagement by people who had a stake in the area was palpable. So my commendation to everybody who's worked on this, on the work. I do have some curiosity about how a few things will evolve. There is, I believe, one vacant lot that is owned by the city that's in the midst of that, and look forward to having a recommendation for how that should be employed for the benefit of that whole area, because that's a nice little resource that's there, and it'd be nice to find a way to engage that into the future betterment of this area. Second, on the backside of some of the blocks where there are commercial properties, are some single-family residences and things, and I think there have been some proposals for redeveloping some of that, perhaps to make multifamily units and that kind of thing. Very interested in finding out how that unfolds as you move forward, so, thank you.
Also, you know, the length of time, you know, we're really happy with what you've done to date from when you started. But the planning for this actually started a year and a half before you guys started. So it became, I think, Carrie Teague and Bill Nundorf and I met with Dr. Allison, a few other people, to talk about what he was going to do with the strip mall, but we also talked about the need to put a plan together, because he wasn't going to do any sale of it or any huge change of it for 10 years. And, you know, then we had to get it on the work plan for the planning commission, because that's its normal progression, and then you needed to find two people that have taken on the job on planning commission. So it's one of those things that I look at where you are now, and I think, yeah, it's great, and you've done it in such a great amount of time. And then I remember, oh, yeah, but it was a year and a half that, before that, that we actually started talking about getting it done. So I guess government does sometimes run at a snail's pace for these things, but it's really exciting to see you at the end of that, that race.
Yes. I think what I really appreciate is that it can be done, once, once the decision has been made. Because I know that there are many issues coming before us, yet South Daley is one prime example.
Sure.
Where sometimes you can get a little gun-shy, because you think it just would take too long to figure out. But I think if the urgency is there, and if the council and the planning commission have their mind set to it, then, then it's good to know that, yeah, things can actually be done in, well within a year. Or less.
Thank you.
Have you heard anything further about the potential for a restaurant and Wally's gas station site? I mean, we, we had them in here for a sketch plan review, but we haven't seen anything filed yet.
Right. I gotta let Carrie chime in on that one.
We have not had any follow-up meetings with the, with the property owner or the potential restaurateur, so it's not looking very promising for that project right now.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lee. Commissioner, thank you. And Commissioner Forrest, thank you as well. All right. Next matter in front of us is Resolution 2015-11, which is Resolution Accepting Donations on behalf of the City of Edina, something that we have to do under state law. We're getting a donation.
So moved.
Got a motion in a second to accept those donations. Any discussion? All those in favor of accepting the donations, Sean, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. And this reporting period, there were contributions to the Edina Art Center, and then over 20 contributions to the Braemar Memorial Fund, and then also a nice gift to the Edina Police Department from the Edina Crime Prevention Fund. Member Brindl, I don't know if you'd want to comment on that. That's to pay for the foot patrol work that was done at 50th and France in 2014, but it was in memory of a person named Leonard Clevin. Any comment on that?
No, but the gift from Josie Ann Clevin is, is the memory gift. But the, the foot patrol is police officers who just kind of hang around 50th and France, just making sure people are doing what they ought to be doing and not doing what they shouldn't be doing. And the business owners at 50th and France love the fact that they're there, they're friendly, they are, they are just, I mean, they're just part of the fabric, and, and keeping an area safe and comfortable for, for everybody who's there, whether it's a customer or a business owner.
Thank you. All right, Director Teague, you've got the next matter in front of us, which is a couple of proposed action items relative to the 7200 France project. As I recall, about 30 days ago, we asked you to come up with some suggestions based on the potentiality that the county may cooperate with the right-in, right-out on France Avenue. We had some other conditions that we imposed, and you went back to work on that, as did our staff. And you're here to report on that tonight. We've got an updated traffic study. I think we should have Ed talk about that, and then we can move it to a council discussion, and I'm sure there'll be some questions that'll be asked, either of you or of the applicant. All right. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Also, in addition to outlining some of these changes that have been made since the last time you were considering this, just to reiterate the process that we're in the middle of here. So this is a two-step formal development review process. We're in that first step that followed, actually, the sketch plan review that was done before the planning commission and council. So this first step in the formal development review process requires four votes of the council tonight, and that's due to the three comprehensive plan amendments that are proposed for building height, building density, and floor area ratio. One of those changes that was recommended by the council was in regard to the building height. The first plan, and we'll take a look at it here in a minute, was 76 feet tall. There was that little mezzanine area on the top that has been removed. Also is a preliminary rezoning of the site from planned office district to planned unit development and a preliminary development plan. And again, the sketch plan was done before, before this step in the process, before the planning commission and council. Also, just wanted to touch on the deadline for a decision by the city. Per state law, the city has to take final action on this project within 120 days of the date that the application was received. So that 120 days runs out on February 3rd. So if the, if the, you have to take action essentially by February 3rd, or the project is deemed automatically approved, and no conditions can be put on the project. If the council approves the, the applications this evening, they would then move to the second step in the review process, and that's final rezoning to PUD, final development plan. And it's at that time that we would adopt the ordinance that would create this new planned unit development zoning district. It's at that time that we'd get into the specific uses that would be in- It's at that time that we'd get into the specific uses that would be allowed within that commercial space on the first level. There was some discussion by the council in regard to the uses. And so that's when that would be ironed out. So just to quickly move through some of the changes, it was in this location here where they had that portion above the main portion of the roof that was removed to take that height down to 63 feet. Other changes are primarily in regard to the circulation and the conditions that both the city council and the county have placed on this project. Staff did have some very successful conversations with the county in regard, in that they have agreed to a right-in, right-out on France for housing element and the commercial uses. So all the access for the housing and the commercial operation would be off of France. Now, there were some conditions that the county put on that. And that would, the first is that they requested that the right-in, right-out be similar to the Byerly's project across the street. And so the design that you see on the screen here does, it has followed that Byerly's proposal or the existing Byerly's. So you see there's a right-in or this turn lane with the little pork chop and the right-in and right-out into the parking ramp, underground parking ramp. This courtyard area does remain, however, it would only be used by visitors and guests of the apartment. There's just a few parking spaces along the ring road here. It would also be used for the trash pickup, deliveries for the commercial uses. The left out, as discussed previously, would be prohibited with that center island, so they would have to proceed to France Avenue. This was the previous location of the housing entrance into the garage. This is now, would be bicycle storage and parking essentially for bicycles. In regard to, another condition that the county put on this is they want to see access to the lot to the south, the lot to the south have access to that new right-in, right-out on France Avenue. And the applicant has provided this drawing of the parking area, and it does show access to the adjacent parking garage to the south. So there would be an opening in the wall in that location here. So you can see in this diagram, the ramp to the residential parking spaces would go down and the ramp to the commercial would go up from that location. As the mayor mentioned, another condition of the county approval of this access was conditioned on an update of the parking study or the traffic study in regard to the U-turn movements and some of the weaving patterns on France Avenue. Ed Terhar has performed that traffic study and he's here this evening and will present that to you following my presentation. So with that in conclusion, as directed by the city council in December, staff has prepared findings and conditions for approval this evening that it does incorporate these conditions and changes into the resolution. So there's a resolution approving the comprehensive plan amendment and a resolution approving the preliminary rezoning. So with that, I can stand for any questions that you may have, or we can invite Mr. Terhar up to present his traffic study.
Questions for Director Teague at this point in time? Let's bring Mr. Terhar up here and go through this updated traffic study.
My name is Ed Terhar. I'm a traffic engineer with Blenk Associates. We're located in, our office is located in Maple Plain. And I've put together a memo with some information addressing some of the two items that the county had specifically related to traffic for the updated plan here, the updated access. The first item had to do with the weaving movement for the new right-in, right-out, specifically for the right-out movement. So if you look up here on the aerial, I have France running north would be in this direction. 72nd is here, Gallagher is here. And this is the 7200 property, 7250. The proposed access would be on the 7200 property. The property line is approximately right here. So the actual access would be just to the north of that on the 7200 property because that's the property that's being redeveloped initially. So you can see the issue that the county wanted addressed had to do with vehicles that are exiting the site from the right-out that want to access the left turn lane. So you can see the access itself will be approximately located at the beginning of the left turn lane for southbound left turns at Gallagher right here. And so their question was, what do we expect that volume to be and will they be able to get over there? So based on the trip generation and the fact that access will be maintained across the 7250 property, so people will have the opportunity to go out that way and access Gallagher to get onto France. We estimated that during the AM peak hour, based on the trip generation in the traffic impact study, we estimated that there would be 25 vehicles that would make that movement, exit here, access the left turn lane to do a U-turn. And in the PM peak hour, we estimated it at 26 vehicles. People will have the opportunity, and I think this is an important point that I get to in the memo, but they will have the opportunity to travel through the 7250 site to get to Gallagher and make a left turn out of the existing left turn lane there. So they have that opportunity and I think people will do that. But there will be some people that will exit onto France themselves. Now, what, a piece that we looked at, and I spent some time out there observing traffic on France, there are a number of gaps that are created in the traffic, the southbound traffic by the upstream signals. So at Hazelton and 70th, when they turn red, there is, there are times when there isn't any traffic traveling southbound, even at the busiest times. So there will be opportunities for vehicles exiting to basically cross France to get to the left turn lane and then make that U-turn. So the gaps are large enough, there's enough of them, that they can accommodate this volume. So I don't see a problem with that left turn, with that particular movement.
What was the reaction of the county to that information?
I just, this memo has just been put together just now, so they haven't actually seen it yet. They will be reviewing it. It's, in my mind, it's important that we encourage or that we, you know, that we make this connection known to people that are entering the site and exiting the site, that they have the opportunity to get over to Gallagher. To that end, I think there could be some signing within the parking ramp and some educational materials given to people accessing the site, that they have the opportunity to do that if they find that movement difficult. So that is that first item that the county raised. The second item had to do with U-turns at 72nd and France. And that would be the situation here where if someone, motorist or a, someone wanting to access 7200 is coming from the south, they have the opportunity to either travel to 72nd with the new, the new left turn lane that's built there, make a U-turn and exit and enter the site at the new access point. Or they would have the opportunity, if they've been there before, if they're a resident, they would have the opportunity to turn at Gallagher and travel through the site to the parking ramp as well. With that in mind and the trip generation, we estimate, or I estimate that the U-turn volume in the morning, the AM peak hour, and it's, in the AM peak hour, the amount of entering traffic is fairly low. The majority of the trips are exiting the site, they're residential in the morning, they're exiting the site. So in the morning, there's far number entering, far less entering trips. In the morning, I estimated the U-turn at 72nd at four vehicles in the peak hour. And in the PM peak hour, we have a larger number of entering trips. I estimate the U-turn volume at 25 vehicles in the PM peak hour. Once again, this location benefits from the gaps that are created by the upstream signals. There is, there are adequate gaps for those vehicles to make the movement. There is enough space here, there's three lanes wide, a vehicle can make that movement and then they can enter into the site, access the right turn lane and enter the site. So in my opinion, there are adequate gaps and that movement can operate adequately. The level of service analysis also confirms that. Even when we add the U-turns, we have adequate level of service. So I see that being a movement that can work and with those gaps and with the volumes that we see. So that summarizes the information I've put together, certainly here to answer any questions or any other items that you may have.
Questions for Mr. Terhar? Member Swenson?
Maybe the owner, what allows us, what allows the 7200 building to have access across 7250?
We would have to establish a cross-access easement. We would do that as part of the final development plan. It could be an added condition that, if you'd like to add that this evening, but there would have to be a cross-access easement agreement.
And is that easement because the same people own both properties or because the property to the south has agreed on that already or?
If, as a separate parcel of record today with a different property owner today, we would have to establish that easement.
But what is our ability to establish that easement as it's a different property owner?
We would have to negotiate that as part of the second phase.
So that's just a recommended exit right now? It's not something that's been established legally?
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Swenson, however, it is, it is one of the requirements, I believe, of the county's approval for the France access.
Okay. And then?
That's true.
That is, that is true. That's one of their conditions.
Thank you.
So if that condition is not met, they would not grant that access on France.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh. Sorry, I thought, Member Swenson, I thought you had a few more questions.
No, I guess I had nothing else.
Member Swenson?
Mr. Terhar, have you been involved at all in the city's efforts to kind of plan the France Avenue corridor over the last year and the kind of combination of changing the, changing the turn lanes, changing the roadway, trying to eliminate the rounded right turns and square those off and create better pedestrian lanes?
I wasn't specifically involved with that, but I've seen what's been done. I'm familiar with what's going on, yes.
So one of the concerns I have, and I'd be interested in your thoughts on it, is what this kind of right-in, right-out, especially with the kind of pork chop island, does to that kind of goal of making a more pedestrian-friendly environment on France Avenue? Aren't we, aren't we kind of taking cars in and out of there pretty fast while we're also trying to get pedestrians across there?
Well, you can, you can see how it's been laid out across the street. And that's, you know, what they've been directed to follow. It does result in the pedestrians needing to cross to the island. There is a refuge in the island and then being able to cross back. So there are marked crosswalks that would be the same on this side. I think there, you know, it is a tight enough radius and a tight enough space that vehicles won't be traveling that quickly. That I would see a concern with those interactions. So I don't see a concern there. We would have the marked crosswalks and the, you know, the pedestrian approaches connected to the sidewalks. So it does add another, you know, it does add a conflict point.
Sure.
There already is, you know, there already are two access points today. Technically, we're reducing it down, you know, by one. So that would improve that situation. And I think if it's done properly, it will work. It will work.
So then the other question is this kind of slip lane, and I don't know whether that's you or Kerry or Scott. Were there discussions with Hennepin County about the slip lane and whether that stays or goes?
No, that, this will, this layout will go. It'll become a traditional right turn lane like you see on this side.
Okay.
So you'll have a taper, you'll have a right turn lane, there'll be a boulevard space, and then there'll be a sidewalk. So this situation will be gone.
So it looks, that then looks different than the site plan that I have that shows it with a sidewalk right next to it and no boulevard. And, I mean, it looks very different in front of the building and the site plan I have than your description just now.
Sure. And I think those details are still being worked out. The exact site plan is in a working order at this point. This is...
What is the standard width of a slip lane?
The right turn lane...
A right turn lane, sorry.
Would be, yeah, would be 12 feet wide. That would be a standard width.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor? Under the current, under the current configuration of the property at 7250 France, in order to traverse that property down to Gallagher, I believe one currently needs to cut through that kind of scary parking ramp and go up a level, or is there some other way to get across there?
I know there is an access in the back today and you do have to go through the parking ramp. I know there have been some discussions about how to address that and there may be some options to keep that outside of the parking ramp. But I think there are some options there to make that work.
And then, when the time's appropriate, I have a question for Director Teague.
Go ahead.
Is this the appropriate time? There have been some modifications. The last time, this was before the city council, we learned that the planning commission had recommended no vote. We learned that staff had recommended no. And I know there have been some modifications. Any change to those positions by staff or by the planning commission?
No, you're correct. The staff recommendation was for denial, as was the planning commission recommendation.
And no changes.
Planning commission hasn't seen it again.
Hasn't seen the changes. Mr. Terhar, I'm looking at one of the attachments that has the drawing with the slip lane in front of it. It seems to me that the county would still want to retain that slip lane as people moved into that area and then they'd be going at a moderate pace when they made that right-hand turn by the island into the building itself. But they want to eliminate the curbing there and eliminate the slip lane and just turn that into a right turn lane? Is that the understanding?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah. What you see on the other side is a standard design for a right turn lane. Typically, you don't have a raised median in between there that leads to snow removal problems and that curb just gets beat up as, over time. So it's best to have it just a striped lane and then you're able to enter the site at that point.
The, one of the elevations which looks southwest shows the parking entrance at the southeast corner of the building. And then, of course, we know that there would be access, is there, would there be access next to the building to go back into the property? Is the road going to run all the way back? Is there going to be an aisle way all the way to the back?
This, you mean right in here?
Is it just the access for the right-in, right-out into and out of the parking ramp?
Yeah, that's, that's my understanding, is that it goes right into the parking ramp.
All right. We could maybe ask the applicant.
Then, then I have a question. How will they get across 7250?
There, the connection that's currently there, down here, to the parking ramp, that will, that will, that will be connected to the new parking ramp.
Okay. I thought that was the question that the mayor just asked, is how far that road would go in? So it'll go in far enough to allow them to go to the south?
Yes.
Okay.
That is, thank you for that clarification.
My understanding from your drawing was that they actually entered the building in the parking ramp and then there was an egress out of the 7200 building into the 7250 property. Is that right?
Right. I mean, you enter in, you end up in the parking garage, but it's still a drive aisle. I mean, you're a drive aisle, you can decide where... You, you can decide where you want to go up or down. But there will be an obvious...
So, you don't access seventy-two-fifty off the road? You go in the building and then through the building into the other building?
Yes. There'll be a connection between the parking ramps or, or the buildings as you, as you state.
All right. Okay.
All right.
Any other questions for Mr. Terhar at this point in time?
No, no, not...
Any, did this prompt any questions for the applicant? I see them sitting here.
Well, I do.
Mr. DeVolos, you want to come up?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, stormwater. I need to understand this better. Because I, I just don't, I don't have a good grasp on how this is going to work and how it's going to improve what's there.
So, first I'll answer the, is this on? Okay. So, first I'll answer the stormwater question, then I'll clarify some of the egress through the ramps and that, if that's okay with council. So, we met today and Carrie was there with the full staff of Edina, the watershed district, and went through the whole stormwater analysis of the site. Right now, the stormwater is basically pours into the area where you see the trees that are on the western part of the site. There's a depression there. There's a pump. We don't know if it works or not. And that's the current stormwater system. And the stormwater system drains seventy-two-fifty, our property, the residential properties to the west, and the apartment building that sits to the southwest. All those go into the common area. So, in preliminary plans, what we worked out is that our site would sort of be unfortunately the burden to handle that. And we'd use a combination of both permeable tubes to handle some of it because we have a sand base that's below the site. But also, if we put below the site, which they call a vault, I call it a cistern, which we can capture the stormwater, blow the building, and then release it at a point-five rate back in the system, which is a considerable improvement over what's there today. In doing preliminary calculations with a myriad of engineers, it's feasible to make it work. Carrie can go in more full detail. But we can improve it. We can resolve it and we can have a metered flow out that does not overload the existing system that's established there today. So...
So, you're, you're confident that in a rain event or in a, in a, in a fast snowfall or a snowmelt event, that as the water table raises, you're going to be able to capture that?
So, what we're going to do is most likely capture two hundred-year events back-to-back. So, we're designing that capacity to capture that, which is basically equal to a five-foot a year storm. So, given that, that we can retain it and get it out, yes. Because we're, they're looking at what they call a worst-case scenario, which is two, basically was in nineteen eighty-seven when we had the great flood here. Basically, two of those events back-to-back. One Wednesday, one Thursday, for example. Retain the water and then release it back out into the system, yes.
And releasing it back out to the system, what does that mean?
So, it means that our rate is, I think it's point, Carrie, what's the exact number? We, we release it at a gradual weight back to the system. So, basically, we're saying we're like a bathtub. The water's collected and it's released over time back out so it doesn't overwhelm the sewer system or the stormwater system.
Okay.
And there's a limit to the rate in which we can remove water off the site right now. Today, we have no idea what it is. Like, say there's a pump. It's an old system was in place. It could be full bore in the system or it could be doing nothing. And that's what we're going to figure. But basically, we're going to make the system operable again to handle that with the improvements that captured the two back-to-back storms.
Will this system have a pump? Or is it all, it will have a pump?
Yeah. I mean, the cistern will be gravity, so it'll flow into the, what they call a vault, I call cistern, into that by gravity. And then, and that'll be able to capture the two hundred-year storms back-to-back. And then there'll be a pump on a meter basis that gradually receives water back into the stormwater system.
We have other developments that have pumps like this. And, and it's, correct me if I'm wrong, those of you who were on the council when Twin Cities Orthopedics went in, I think they have a pump. And there is in, I, I believe in the resolution, there is the, the clause in there that says the pump will be maintained on a regular basis. So, to make sure it does work and that you know it works, so that you're not in a situation where, I don't know if the pump's working. So, so that's, that's something that I'd be looking for, I think, is if we've got a pump there, it's mechanical. Things happen with mechanical things, that it is regularly maintained. Because it does protect this building. It protects the neighbors to the east, west. It doesn't protect seventy-two-fifty. Seventy-two-fifty's higher than this.
Correct.
It, it's part of the problem.
We receive, and the apartment, we receive their waters as a gift.
Right, right. Exactly. So, all right. Well, I feel better about that.
What's the capacity of the cistern?
So, the capacity, and he can, Chad can go more in detail, but basically, the over is that the watershed that is shown in the area, and actually, I have that. Sheldon, you want to grab it out of my bag and I'll put it on the overhead? Because this is, this is helpful. We went through today. I'll put on the overhead cameras because this way you'll still understand what we're So, if you can, so if you can focus this on, so basically, to get an idea of what we're dealing with, the yellow line represents our watershed. So, you can see the houses. So, here's France in top to give you reference, seventy-two-fifty. So, following this line around, this is what we're capturing. This blue represents the high-water flood event that you see within there. So, you can see the amount of area we're having to capture basis this whole end of the block. And it's this capture area is what we're engineering for in this area. And that's what we're taking, the apartment, seventy-two-fifty, these series of houses and twin homes right here, and then obviously, our respective property. And that's what's coming into it. And so, we're basically taking this watershed, capturing. The reason why we're doing a vault, we could create it here, but then we'd have to destroy the trees. And that was an option we did not want to do. So, we could do it here and make it work, but then we lose the buffer and we accomplish. So, we have decided to incorporate within the building to preserve this. So, we'll make very little adjustments here. We'll make some, but nothing to affect any of the trees because that's a real asset to the site in terms of the buffer from the neighbors to the west. So, this, we're going to basically maintain and preserve and augment it by putting additional capacity here below the far western side of the building. And that's the way we're going to work the system. Then we're going to perforate it around the perimeter to help draining it into the sandy soil. What doesn't drain there goes in the cistern and then that's released by the metered pump. That will have an alarm system because that'll be standard, much like a fire alarm system does. So, what you're saying is accurate. The pump has a light. You've seen pump houses, you know, and you see the sign of light flashing, call the city. And so, this will have an alarm system so that the liability maintenance will always know that this system is operating in place.
One of the concerns of the residents that I recall over in Bristol Court was that in other flood events, there hasn't been enough sort of natural capacity, I'll call it, back in the, in the, in the ditch back, you know, where the trees are. And they've, they've suffered some water damage. They thought as a direct result of the lack of that building's capacity to handle the water on site. And then it's just, I suppose it overflowed the capacity of the, of the natural holding area. Are you, are you indicating that with respect to anything within the orange line or the brown line, you're going to be, you're going to be eliminating those, those historic problems for them?
Correct.
Or those historic risks, I should say?
Exactly. Because right now, this has a pump, but this has never been maintained, nor has it really been incorporated or tracked in the city record. So, it's sort of a no man's land in terms of water retention and just is flowing in here. So, right now, what we're going to do is basically take this watershed, incorporate a proper system, a proper storage capability, and then manage the pumps and all that to prevent that from occurring. Because right now, it's just by chance. If there's heavy rain, it'll fill up like a bathtub.
Member Swenson raised an interesting issue, I thought, on the, on the necessity for potential cross-easements. One of the other matters that was in one of the reports, I think it was Mr. Terhar's report, was that traffic on Seventy Second now would only be traffic created by guests or other service people coming into that, that, that main entry off Seventy Second. And you'd still have that, that buffer so there couldn't be a left turn out.
Correct.
Is that, is that accurate?
Exactly. We're maintaining...
I don't see that as a, I don't see that as a condition in here either, that it would be guest parking or service vehicle access only.
And that's, and that's our intent. It'll only be those two uses. The rest of our traffic, residential, commercial, will come in off of France Avenue. And to clarify, what Ed was talking about access, and he's pretty much right, our intent is actually use this strip of land. And we have a very good cooperative arrangement and arrangement with the building next door, seventy-two-fifty. So, the issue of easements, and that won't be an issue in terms of working with the site. And our intent is actually running along here, along the far west side of the ramp. So, it'd be sort of be a clear egress exit. So, as Councilman Stewart said, you don't have to go through the scary ramp. It would be a clear legible path along the far western side of the ramp that would connect our property to Gallagher. And we're just rather playing with, we make it a one-way loop, just sort of control flowing out. But this is where the connection would occur. And then, we work to maybe combine these two drives you see right here to get one organized intersection. So, that'll be the intent because otherwise, the ramp gets a little circuitous, wanting your way up and out. So, it'll just be a direct shot along the western side of the ramp to Gallagher.
And you've got, you've got, you've got what, an oral conditional sort of agreement with them?
Right now, we have oral condition. We've had good conversations with them. Obviously, once we go into final review, then all those aspects will be qualified as easements.
Member Swenson?
One of the aspects of your first-floor restaurant retail space was that you wanted the possibility of valet. I'm assuming that that doesn't happen in front right now when you have a right turn lane. Is that a correct assumption?
That's a correct. We may, and I don't know if Carrie, if I can get into your deck of information just to reference. So, thank you. So, with the slip lane, I'll answer the other question here. Depending, working with the county, if we're allowed a little bump out here, allow that occur, we will try, otherwise, we'll try to incorporate it back here within our property. So, that's something we want to sort of resolve through the final plan process. Right now, we're working with this because we like to say how to get to the colony and they say match foots across the street, which tend to do. And if that could be incorporated, we will work on that.
My biggest concern, if this were to go forward, well, I have a lot of concerns, but as to the front and how it relates to the pedestrian, is if you do the bump out there and then you have outdoor seating and you basically have a sidewalk that's going right along France, if you don't have a boulevard, you start getting less and less pedestrian width through there. And if we're working so hard to encourage pedestrians to be able to walk and to get to places and to go down France, that's counterproductive to that.
No, I agree. But you see where the blue is here?
Mm-hmm.
And where the street is here? We got a good setback. I understand what you're saying.
I know you do. But in a lot of the designs, I see outdoor seating and a fence and then cute hedges. And then you've pushed the pedestrians to the very end of the sidewalk there. And now, we're talking about the potential for a bump in for valet. It makes it a fairly awkward pedestrian crossing there. And that's not what I would want there.
Okay. Understood.
Well, I guess the obvious, the biggest question, how do you solve that problem?
We'll solve it as we work through because if valet doesn't occur, you know, we work without it. Or I pull it within the building. Let's see if I can get my cursor back here. But I would basically pull it into, basically, where you see the entrance of the ramp, we'd work it within the property. So, that may be one solution. So, we have an A-plan and work in front of B-plan, which we'd work it where you see the entry to the ramp. So, the valet would occur at the southern portion of the property.
Which we talked about...
Then the cars would go on the ramp.
We talked about the last time you were here, is that possibility?
Can I just ask a question with respect to the seventy-two-fifty property? It seems like you've got a working relationship with them to snake this access through. Has there been any discussion about combining the properties and developing that? It seems like we're going through all kinds of gymnastics on France when if we put these two together, we'd have a chance to solve a lot of problems.
Let's just say we're treating them as separate, but planning that it works. That's why the common drive in the middle. So, I can go that far as a statement, but no, no more. Like I say, we have a good relationship with the owner and we're working to treat them that way. And that's why you're seeing the ramps align and the central access occur because those are really the main, common planning issues. Common entrance at the center of France, mid-block, and then obviously, the access of Gallagher, which are the two key planning issues in terms of traffic. And that we've accomplished. And how we go further, you know, I can't say right now, but I can say right now that we sort of started addressing in terms of those major functions.
All right. Thank you.
Although, if, Member Swenson? Member Stanton's suggestion is realized at some point, you wouldn't need the turnoff off of France at all. You could have entrance to the whole thing off of Gallagher.
I would still, in planning, keep the France access because it's, if we have it, it's just a good orientation for people to get to. And in some ways, you want some access off France, and this goes back to our design issue. A few curb cuts is good for a street. I think you have less curb cuts, the street gets more to a throughput situation. Traffic sort of flows through. So, in my standpoint, it helps establish address and I'd use both because then you sort of split the traffic so you don't overburn one over the other. Because the more points of access have, the more traffic spreads out and the less you create what you call pinpoint issues where there may be stacking or right turn lane or there may be too much pressure on Gallagher by splitting the traffic. You release it demand and it makes for a better flow of a project as opposed to taking all in one central point.
I think if you're only looking at automobile traffic, that's true. But as Member Swenson suggested, if we also look at pedestrian and bicycle traffic, we have more disruptions to them because of the curb cut.
Yeah. And I agree. But there was a Councilman Stanton that said, you know, just, you know, lay the issue. County has sort of a plan to make France more throughput, more freeway-like. I don't mean to use those terms, less access points, move more cars through. You mentioned scoring the corners, reducing the slip lanes. I get what he's saying. You know, it's going to have to be a county, city discussion to get there because their policy is moving cars through. The city of Edina is trying to create an urban street. The two don't align right now. And so, that is get down here. So, basically, our goal, why you see the outdoor restaurants, why you see the sidewalk elements, is to get to the idea of creating a pedestrian street. Because we'd be the first building on France that actually is an outdoor restaurant directly on France Avenue. If you look at Tavern on France, it's sort of brimmed it off and isolated from the street. So, and our intent would be to have that directly visible street connected to the street to encourage exactly that kind of pedestrian relationship. And that hasn't happened yet. And we hope to be the first one to allow that to occur.
Well, I, I actually had a very similar suggestion the last time we talked about this. And what Member Swenson said at the time was that we want to, she wants to see us prevent France from being a highway. And, and that, that would create a highway. If there are no entrances to the buildings along France, it would create that sort of highway feel. And that's the last, frankly, it's the last thing we want. It's what we're working to prevent. So, so a point well taken. One, we got, we got a, a letter, a very thoughtful letter. And one of the points that, that was brought up was harmony and how this building creates harmony or is in harmony with its surroundings. Now, some of its surroundings are old, decrepit, ready for redevelopment. And some of its surroundings are not. How does this building, because it's kind of starkly colored, it's very different in color and context to buildings around it? How does it, how is it going to live in harmony with the other buildings?
Could you put up, Carrie's, because I want to go to the overall perspective to answer that? So, thank you. So, let me get to this image right here. And again, I don't know what I did to other of this. There's my cursor. So, part of the trick with this is scale and what I call undulation of facade and ins and outs. Because to create harmony, you need variety. And that's sort of the deal. Because if you have a series of buildings that are very straight and angler, like the building next door, it becomes a very boring facade. So how do you sort of create harmony, interest in scale and detail to keep the street interesting? Because that's really what the exercise is, when you're dealing with long blocks and long facades. And I put that right in there, because if this building was treated as a straight flat facade, it would appear a slap and not have that kind of else. So in terms of harmony, harmony, if I can say it, is we cut off the corner and stepped it back here to create the outdoor space, the zigzag front to create interest, the same occur here. Because what it does is shorten this facade, so it doesn't look like a long linear facade. It actually takes it into a scale that's shorter, and actually puts a high degree of variety to it. And that's part of the harmony that creates that kind of interest. Room and board, I'll use for an example, when I think that is a facade, there's a lot of change to it. A building did it 70th and France, I mean, yeah, 70th and France, that has the vitamin shop, you know, the different shapes and the roof angles. That sort of creates the details. I sort of keyed off of that building, room and board, to have a lot of individual actions and curb facade to keep it interesting, and have that kind of scale that works along it. And that's really the key, because then if you walk it, there's a scale of detail that keeps you interested, as opposed to a long wall. If you drive it, there's major reference points, you get to the corner and facade that give that kind of interest. So that's really due to France. In terms of harmony backside, you can see this part was cut back to three stories of B below the tree line. So there's a transition. It goes from high to townhouse medium to single family low. So there's a natural transition where you go single family, twin home, townhouse, five-story coming across. And the courtyard here, you know, I kept it this way, because one time you suggested, do you want to flip the building? You know, and I refused to, because what that does is keep the 72nd facade not being a wall, but creating this green space, which ties a green space that's around sunrise, to sort of keep that kind of openness and scale to it. So you're going from single family, a chunk of building, opening, chunk of building, courtyard in the corner. So there's sort of a rhythm to it that works its way across. So it's not just a square box, you know, that just rings the site, but has these breaks in and out that create that interest. So harmony-wise, and in scale, it's, you know, it's the scale of, of its surrounding buildings here that align France Avenue, but it has that detail. So that's really kind of amounts embedded into it. Because we could have much less expensability by making straight lines, you know, because anytime you make a corner or an angle, whatever, there's a cost to it. But I think this is important to give it an interest of variety, as you call it, harmony, so that the pedestrian enjoys it. The person driving by enjoys it, and it has a scaling uniqueness like the room and board, the 70th and France building.
So as I'm walking by the, at pedestrian height, I'm looking at glass and stone, right?
So you're looking at this angled piece here, which are the storefronts.
Yep.
So there's the outdoor cafe on the corner here.
Yep.
So you pass that, and these are the individual entries through here, which are the various retailers.
Right.
And then the green roof, and then the shrubbery entries along that edge.
Right, so I'm looking at glass and stone as I walk by, and then the corners look like they're probably metal. And then up above, it's, is it brick and, and metal? Is that what it is on top?
And brick, exactly.
And brick?
Yep.
Okay.
So there's sort of three major materials, which is brick.
Okay.
Metal, stone, and glass are the major components.
All right. Can I ask a question?
Member Swenson.
In the southwest corner, where I've never seen what the building looks like, because I've never seen a shot from the west side or from the south side.
Here?
Yep. Can you explain to me where the height goes? Does it stop at the edge of the three, of the?
No, it stops right here, right there. So it's three stories here.
So the three stories are 35 feet?
Yep, and it cuts right there.
Okay. If the mayor and I showed up for Walk with the Mayor, we had a great time. But we only walked with each other, because no one was there at Southdale. But the one unique thing, we can entertain each other. But the one unique thing we did is we walked out the upper level of Southdale and took, walked to South, one, Southdale one place. And it has three stories, and then behind it, it has five stories in there, in the lowest building and the median building, not the higher building. So we could kind of see what it looked like to look at three stories and see five stories behind it. And we walked up to where approximately we thought we'd be in the backyard of probably Steve Brown's house or something, to see what that looked like. And it was an interesting experience. So I know that the vision from the west has a huge gap for your open courtyard before you hit the five stories. I'm not particularly as concerned about that spacing and that view. I am a teeny bit concerned about where, right now, it says residential units.
Yep, that's where the stuff occurs, correct.
Is there a way to change the look of that so that it looks stepped also?
So what we may do, but I got to keep an immediate respect for the performance, I'll look at this. Where it says residential units, I may see if I could do a three, four, five element there. But just at this point, where you see the residential, create a little bit of a flow there.
And that's, that would be one thing that if this were to go forward and had approval from the majority of the people here, that I think could help in how that building looks. It's a podium from the residential area, basically.
It's right here.
Yep, that corner.
Understood.
There's a little bit of separation there, as Member Swenson points out. Interestingly, the three-story townhouses that you have are 35 feet at the ridge line, and so are the ones over at One Southdale Place. You're a little taller on France Avenue.
Correct.
Than they are. They're at 57 feet. You're at 63 because of the retail component.
The retail, exactly.
So you've got a six-foot differential there, but in the back, abutting the single-family neighborhood and the, and Bristol Court, you're the exact same height as One Southdale Place. And it, it did really help get a sense of what that would be like by standing there and looking at those two buildings juxtaposed with each other at three stories and five stories. So I think Member Swenson has a good idea there.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
So you've talked a little bit about the materials that you're going to use, and that was, that was a concern for some folks. We haven't talked much about your landscaping plan, but we see that there's a lot more greenery there than there is right now, which is a plus. You want to talk a little bit about your landscape?
Yeah, so, you know, part of the, you know, if you look at the existing building, I don't know if Carrie has an aerial of this or not, maybe not. But the existing building basically is probably, site is probably 95% paved between the large surface lot and the building. Part of the reason for this, and we still are going to develop this further as we come back, is that we want to create an earth roof in here, and we put all our parking, except for a few guest spaces below ground, which right now, the building's 100% surface parking in all aspects. So because the site was a quarry, it was mined out, it created a natural depression. That gave us the ability to put all our park in our ground. And the idea is that we're creating an earth roof over the garage and the center courtyard to create the greenery through here, retaining the trees at this point, and then creating a green roof through here, and then the landscape around the perimeter of the building. So even though the amount of billow there is still the same, the amount of greenery will increase over the existing building, probably 50 to 75% what exists there today.
Okay. One of, one of the concerns that was raised in the correspondence that Member Brindle referred to, which was really quite well done, Mr. Turner and some of his neighbors, or some of the other folks from the neighborhood, expressed a concern about the future, which we all think about. You know, you go down France Avenue to the south of where you are, first there's 7250. You, you can kind of get a sense that you're talking to that fellow that owns that building, and maybe something good will happen there. But as you go down the way, you see remodeled buildings that are just one story in height. And one of the fears is that we end up with a walled off France Avenue. I think your design sets back and helps avoid that issue. But why don't you talk about what you've done to avoid the sense that the building is, you know, kind of hanging over the street, and you're, you're making a run through a gauntlet of some type?
I'm going to refer to, we wrote up the Urban Design Guidelines for Dinkytown, which we did just last year, which by the way, it was a reaction to the very issue that was in your letter. You've seen a lot of those six-story housing blocks occur that started to shoot through the neighborhood, and they had the same fear. So we developed a set of guidelines, and what the guideline basically said was that the podium element that the building needs to set back, there needs to be a change of facade, and we did every 20 feet to 40 feet, depending on the block. That there'd be penetration, a base, a top, and a middle. And we'd made a limit on length of walls before there was a break, whether it's an angle or a setback or something. So there was a movement and variety. And then we encouraged setbacks at the top, so that the sunlight would come into it, because those areas in Dinkytown are light tighter street grid. So we made a bunch of criteria in terms of setbacks, facade changes, material changes, length of facade before a break occurs, and all those elements to that. We sort of took that same set of rules on top of this to allow that to occur. And I think when you get to developing what I call Design Guidelines for France Avenue, that'll be one of the keys. Because right now, you're sort of taking a risk. You get a good architect, you get a good building, you get a bad architect, you get a bad building. That's sort of what you're hoping for. But there is ways to codify that kind of variety and change into it, because we put it together at Dinkytown, and it worked very well. It still allows development, but cut the variety. I wish I could show you an example of before and after. And the same thing occurred here, where you carve the corners, you step the building back, create the zigzags. Keep this length short and keep a variety within it. All those tricks force your own facades and present, prevent what you're referring to as a canyon effect, and keep sort of visual interest along the street. So it is feasible in the redevelopment to allow the variety to occur and still accept density within France Avenue.
Member Brindle.
Thank you. As I'm looking at this, I'm thinking about a conversation we have with every one of these buildings, and that is the chillers. So talk to me about the chillers and where they're located and the amount of sound that they generate, please.
So where we're going to put it is right, screen it on the roof. Why on the roof? Because that's what prevents the noise from transferring over. Rooftops the best insulation for your mechanical equipment, because the noise travels up if it occurs in a way. What we will not do is obviously put it along the west side of the building, because that'd be awful. So we tend to put all our mechanical shows so forth up on the roof from here forward to keep our sight and sort of cluster in this area, so out of sight, out of mind. So that does not impact.
So what are the two boxes that stick up?
Here?
Yes, that's one.
That's a chiller. Oh, no, just joking. That's an elevator pent, elevator penthouse. You know, the elevator has the overshoot on the top.
Oh, it has the overshoot on there. Oh, and that's what those two things are?
Exactly. They're not chillers.
All right, great.
So we've talked a lot about the design. I actually, I, I like the things you've done with the design. I like the penetration, the interest, the rest of it. But one of the things we haven't spent much time talking about is the density. And we're talking about going from, I mean, the comp plan amendment request is to go from 30 units per acre to 50 units per acre. Can you remind me again, the, you know, the dynamics financially as to why you have to have that many units on this small number of space?
Part of it is, obviously, you know, this building does have a 20% affordable housing component with it. And so part of it was, you need enough units to subsidize it. So basically, we have 33 units, that's affordable. The other factor is we put 100% of our parking below grade. We could go lower density in a surface parking lot, you know, like a medical office building, but what gain have you? You may have followed the comp plan, but you probably created a miserable urban design. Because if I followed the comp plan on this, I could do a building in the center lot, surround it with parking, and follow a comp plan to a T and hit the density, and probably create a environment that you would all cringe at. So what we exchanged, what we thought reasons why to allow the comp plan to be varied was 100% of the parking, the green roof, the addressing the street, the 20% affordable housing, those what I call urban components that make a better streetscape than if it was just the straight comp plan followed to the exact dimensions and scale. So that was really why this decision was made.
So have we done any, and I don't know whether this, this may be a question for Mr. Teague as well, whether there's been any kind of study in terms of the capacity, the sewer, water main, et cetera? I mean, we've talked a lot about the roads and the transportation, but what about the other infrastructure support when we're going to this kind of density? And, and, and if I can just add on to that, you know, I worry that, that there's a, if not a legal, at least a psychological precedent, and that we have this whole shoulder, west shoulder up and down France. And so if we were going to stick at 50 units per acre all the way up and down France, what's that? Have we taken a look at that, and what are the thoughts on that?
We have not taken a look up and down the entire corridor, but that is in our 2015 work plan, along with engineering, to take a look at the utilities capacity within this area. In regard to just the traffic generated compared to a, a medical facility that meets code, this project would generate less traffic than a code-compliant medical facility. But 2015, we'll take a look at the, the capacity in terms of utilities up and down France.
Existing capacity can handle it both from a roadway infrastructure standpoint, stormwater management, and sewer. Is that, is that accurate?
That is accurate.
And, and have we, what, if any, communication has there been with the school district over the additional residents and the impact that that might have on enrollments?
They were sent notification of the comprehensive plan, as were all of the surrounding cities to Edina, and their feedback was that they didn't have any concerns.
I did have a conversation. I don't know if I can put it together immediately, but it's like over the next five years, I think it's a growth of 70 students in the area. There, there are a couple of families that have moved into One Southdale Place. So it's not, it's not going to be unheard of that families would move into this. So, but they, they have growth planned, and it is based on the growth of apartments at Southdale. Because that's where the growth is.
Is One Southdale Place in the Richfield School District or Edina?
In Edina.
It is, but it's, they're open and rolled. So, but there are, there are families at One Southdale Place.
Other questions? Director Teague, I had a couple of questions for you about the meetings that Mr. DeVallis alluded to today. Engineering-wise, watershed-wise, was there anything that came out of those meetings at the staff level that you think should be incorporated as a potential condition, should the council decide to move forward with this matter this evening?
Any project would be contingent on watershed district approval. So those requirements would be the same as the city, so that would be, that would be rolled into your final development plan, final rezoning, would be contingent on watershed district approval.
Is it also contingent on the county's approval of the traffic study?
It would be, including the right in, right out, and the conditions that go along with that.
I think you've alluded to that on the first page of your memorandum, and I think Member Swenson's doing some work on that. What about from an engineering standpoint? Were there any issues that came up today that you thought were, would be important to impose as conditions on a preliminary basis?
I might ask Director Milner to help me out with that, whether we heard anything that we would need to add in here.
Well, the main point is the, the stormwater, and the watershed district has more stringent rules, and that's where that back-to-back storm that was referenced earlier today, that's their rules that they have to meet. It's either a back-to-back storm or a 10-day snowmelt. Whatever's worse, they have to meet those requirements. So as long as that's in there, that's going to be, meet the stormwater, the water main, water is not an issue. And the sanitary sewer, it's such a small incremental addition to the system that. the sanitary sewer, it's such a small incremental addition to the system that we can't force any larger scale improvements. And as Carrie mentioned, we're looking at the whole Southdale area this year for sanitary sewer, take a look at that sanitary sewer in that area, quadrant of town.
Okay. All right. Thank you. It's helpful. Let me look one more time here.
Can I ask you some questions on the resolution? So I'm, I'm looking for the part where it talks about Hennepin County needing to approve the Wanacan Associates Road Traffic Study. But I don't see that, that in the approval. Did I miss it?
You've got it in your covering memo. You said it would be, those conditions would be made part of the resolution, but I think it would be better.
There are new resolutions on the dais?
I've got both, and I'm comparing both. That's, it's just a little cumbersome. But I got the new ones on the dais, and I have the ones from the packet.
All right.
And I see that there are sections under this, section one, two, and then three, you start talking about the curb cut shall be off of France. There's one under, well, first let's solve where Hennepin County's approval for the traffic study is in, in there.
The curb cut access approval conditions, those would be part of the resolution 2015-13. That wouldn't be a comprehensive plan issue. That would be with the, with the rezoning. So that condition is condition number one.
Yep, I got that. I see that. But I don't see, I thought part of what Hennepin County wanted was that. They wanted to approve the traffic study and for, for crossing the traffic to the other lane and other ways of exiting. And they want that cross easement. So shouldn't those be embodied somewhere in one of these two pieces?
Condition number one does include the shared access with the property to the south. And then the traffic study is condition 16. It does not mention subject to approval of the county. That might be something that, that we could add.
So 16 needs subject to approval. And the confusing thing for me for one is you mentioned Hennepin County's approval after the right in, right out. But then it's not mentioned again. You just have two sentences about the cross easement, but it doesn't mention Hennepin County's position.
It does, it does not. It just conditions that the shared access, there must be a shared access across.
But I thought you said that Hennepin County insisted that that happened. And I don't see where that states clearly that that is the case.
Maybe, we insist it happens too. So is that maybe why you worded it the way you did?
It is.
Because both units of government would insist on that.
Right.
So is it, for my lawyers here, is it the way it's written clear? Whether you like it or not, you still have that mind that I need. So. While he, while I have been worrying about that, that issue of trying to accommodate more podium height on the southwest corner of the building as it steps from the 35-foot mark up to the five-story in a four-story podium, is that possible to add that to number five, where you are talking about findings, podium height would be used on France from the residential area to the west and from the residential area to the west, including?
I think we'd want to add that as a specific condition in addition to the finding. So maybe a condition 17 regarding additional podium height in the southwest corner.
Is that what we are on? 17, 17 under, so it's not under?
It wouldn't be under findings?
So you don't want it under findings? You want it under approval?
A specific condition.
Condition of approval.
You could add condition 17.
Okay, so 17 is the podium four-story change in the southwest corner. That's a good way to.
Step down.
Do we have, do we have any discussion on, I'm trying to compare both, it's kind of hard, on the boulevard on 72nd that it's built as a plan with boulevards? We have, and do we have a condition that the guest parking be right turn out only? Because the boulevards force that, but I would like a belt and suspenders where both are included?
Well, you'd, do you want that as a condition?
You could make that specific. It's, right now, it's subject to the, the final development plans have to be consistent with the preliminary plan. But if we want to be specific on that point, we could, we could add that.
Well, we'd want the median plus, we want to make sure that the access to the site is only for service vehicles and, and, and guest parking on the 72nd Street side.
And that needs to be updated. It's part of 1.01 in resolution 2015-13. Under 1-01, the final paragraph, the second sentence, access to residential use would be off 72nd Street. So that would need to be more specific about access for visitors.
Which, which resolution are we working off of here, Member Swenson? Or are you working off of? Let's all work off the same one.
Well, it's the same paragraph on both of them.
So give me your paragraph.
1.01. It's the final paragraph.
Which resolution?
They're both identical.
No, what number resolution?
13 is the one I'm looking at. But what I'm saying is.
There are two resolutions.
I know, but when I go back and forth, I don't see any, I haven't found a difference yet.
No, Member Brindle said there is no difference.
Well, there is no difference in this paragraph. I haven't analyzed, I mean, there is a difference in 1.02, but not 1.01. But 1.01 would need to reference that access to the residential use would be off of 72nd Street for visitors only. Or.
Visitors and service vehicles.
Access to, access for visitors and service vehicles to the residential use would be off of 72nd Street. That edit would need to be in both of them.
It's in condition one on, on 2015-13.
Uh, no.
This is one I'm working off of.
No, it's what, I'm looking at 13. But it doesn't limit it to, to, to visitors and service vehicles. Where does, where does it say that, Carrie?
I could reword it a little better. It says there may be loading and visitor access parking off 72nd Street.
Okay, so, oh, I'm looking at background. That's what I'm looking at, is background versus approval. Okay, so background is historic.
Correct.
And therefore, it has to be the way it is. Okay, I, got it, got it, got it. Okay, okay, I'm okay.
So you don't feel that I have to add guest and service only off of 72nd?
Not in 1.01?
I could reword, reword that to make it more clear than it is now.
I think you need to edit.
Part of it is a condition 19 right now, so you may.
I think you need to add it.
Combine it, but.
Yeah, if we want it as a condition, because what condition one says is there may be visitor and loading access. So.
So right now, I'm actually working off the one that you sent out January 20th. And that's what I've put the additions on. So is that the one I can use?
Correct, the one that was laid out before you this evening.
The one that's in the packet is cleaner than the one you put in front of us.
The only change to the one that's laid out in front of you are those highlights on page one. So you could, in terms of the conditions, work from the one in the packet.
Those highlights weren't in the pack, one information we got in our packet.
That's right.
That's right. The, the highlights, those are the changes that were added to the resolution. It's only the findings.
Okay, so I can accept the findings?
Yes.
On that, and then we can go immediately to using this?
Yes, yes.
This part?
Correct.
So, so you want me to start, accept the findings off of that page, and then start with that resolution?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, then I'm going to take a stab at it.
Go ahead.
So the, I'm going to move resolution 2015-12 with the findings that were on our table, and then go to our packet, resolution 2015-13, with the additions of?
Take them one at a time, and you probably should work off both of the ones that were on the dais tonight.
I, those hadn't changed.
I think. You're going to just do 2012.
Oh, I see. Okay, I'll move, okay, I'll move the findings for resolution 2015-12.
And that's the comprehensive plan amendment?
That's the historical part, including the comprehensive plan amendment.
All right, so this is a four-fist roll call vote. All right. And this is accompanied by which changes that you've made?
Based on what Carrie told me, that has no changes that we've discussed tonight. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So none of the, none of the concerns that we brought up need to be included in that.
In number 12.
Highlighted ones that were on the dais.
Right.
All right. We got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Member Sutton?
Well, I will not vote in favor. It probably comes as no great shock since I've seen this once before and voted that way. I think, while I like the project in a lot of ways, I think that there's, it's going to set a psychological precedent for us. We're really making a change in terms of height, in terms of density on this west shoulder of France before we've really figured out what the context is and how that matters. And I think that's the, I think that's the wrong choice. I do think that, you know, the other thing I would suggest is I still think even with the, with the access as it's been changed, it's still very convoluted. We're talking about going through another building, going back and forth, snaking around. I still think it's unsatisfactory. I think it's counterproductive to what we're trying to do with the pedestrian atmosphere along France Avenue, along the further north on the corridor. So I think there's a lot of reasons that it doesn't work. You know, the other thing I would suggest, and I guess I'll get to this on the PUD, well, I'll leave that for the PUD because I want to talk about that a little bit as well. But I think there's some reasons we shouldn't give up either. I mean, this is a, this is a project I think that has some promise if we can figure out how to make it fit in. One of the really great features is the affordable housing. And I think one of the really nice parts about this is, for all the objections we've heard of this, I haven't heard a single objection to the affordable housing. I haven't heard anybody say that's a problem with this project. And I think that's a really good thing. And I think that's a promising thing for us being able to develop more affordable housing. You know, I think if we, if we can be patient and combine with this, with this property to the south, there's an opportunity to do something that could solve some of these access problems and could also, could also spread this development out across a couple of properties. And it would buy us some time to do some of the things that I think we need to do with the stakeholders. You know, we heard a presentation earlier tonight on Wooddale and Valley View site, and we've done some terrific things there. We've done some great things at, at Grandview and in our residential redevelopment about getting stakeholders engaged in figuring out together what the right answer is. It was really, Mr. Turner, your letter and whoever you were writing on behalf of, made the point right at the outset that you recognize that change is going to happen and you're not looking to just stop all change. And I think that's an important admission. And I think that's one that signals that we ought to work together to figure out what the right answer is. And, and I just think it's premature at this stage, given how it's going to impact the entire corridor. And so, under these circumstances, I'm not, I'm not prepared to, to support it. But I, I am hoping that we can, that we can keep moving in this direction and we can get the property owners at 7200, the property owners at 7250, other property and business owners along the corridor and the residents in the, in the area, and get some representatives from them to, to sit down as stakeholders and figure out some concepts that we can all agree on in terms of how we want to redevelop this, this left shoulder quarter. So I will not be voting in favor of the motion to amend the comprehensive plan.
Did we have a second to the motion first?
Yes, there was.
Okay. Then I'll, can I speak on why I made it? Or do you have something you'd rather?
I think we should hear from Member Stewart because it may cause us to go a different direction.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I do want to echo some of the things Kevin said. The, this is a tired property. It needs redevelopment. I want to thank the people who want to redevelop it for their, their interests, their investment in our community for the way they want to do that. So that, that is a very welcome change, and we want to see it happen. I also want to thank the people in the neighborhood who have worked together to present us with a cogent set of inputs that we could filter through. I also had a number of individual inputs. Those are all appreciated. And that, there have been a number of issues raised, the water management issue and the engineering department. I think these are things that we really look to staff to provide us the professional advice, the engineering advice about whether or not there's going to be an issue. And, and we trust our staff. They've done an excellent job. And we're counting on them to continue to do an excellent job on that. The aesthetics are things that I think the city council should not delve into too much, though, Dean, I have to say, every project I've seen you work on, you've just done beautiful work, in my opinion. And, and I have no doubt that'll continue. The issue of density is one that I don't think has been appropriately addressed here. To move from 30 units to 50 units per acre, fully a 66% increase from the comprehensive plan as it stands today, I think is much too dramatic a change. I, I'd like to understand and, and, you know, I, I very much admire and, and respect the work that's been done by the people who've been here before me. I think there are reasons why the comprehensive plan has some of those ratios in there. And, and so I think we need to give very careful thought to making those changes. The precedent, as, as a member Staunton suggested, that, that it sets is important. I, I think the, I'm more inclined to be sympathetic to the fact that underground parking is created and, and being used rather than surface lots as something I want to suggest that that's a good benefit for us as a community. The issue of, of affordable housing, on the other hand, I think we should have an expectation that every multifamily unit that is proposed in the city have some element of affordable housing. And I don't think that's the kind of thing we should trade off or negotiate over to forego some of the other requirements currently under our plan. So my inclination, like Member Staunton, is to vote no on this at this time for those, for two reasons. Number one, because of the really dramatic change to the comprehensive plan. And number two, because I want to really send an important signal that we trust the, the structures of government that we've put in place to help us with these things. When the planning commission has worked very hard to review these elements, and the planning commission has recommended through unanimous vote that we should not approve this plan, I think we have to have some very compelling reasons to override the recommendation of the planning commission. Similarly with, with staff. So my inclination is also to vote no on this. So my inclination is also to vote no on this.
Alright, please, because everybody knows in the audience and up here, we need a four-fist vote to approve a change in the comprehensive plan. We're not gonna have that. This is an opportunity for the applicant to withdraw the application. Otherwise, you won't be able to bring forward another housing application for a year. So, Member Swenson's prepared, I think, to withdraw her motion. But if you withdraw the request... If you withdraw the request, and you, if you, if this housing is important to you, and you've talked about the importance of it, and you've also talked about medical office, it's a property you own.
Right.
And we're, we're sensitive to the notion that there are uses that you may wanna put there that aren't consistent with what we've been talking about for the past few months.
That's correct.
Nonetheless, unless you withdraw this request, you'll be barred from applying again for a year. For this type of...
For this type of project?
For this type of project.
Just a medical office building will be okay?
Would not affect a medical office building.
Okay, perfect. Laurie, then go ahead.
Correct.
I'd like to see the vote?
Yeah, we wanna see, we wanna push for a vote.
Because we're at the point where we've worked with the city for a considerable amount of time, and put a lot of effort into it. And if, if the resolve is not there, that's understood. But the intent was always to develop a property, and if we can't move ahead with Plan B...
As, I'm just gonna interrupt.
Yeah, go ahead, jump in, Laurie.
As, as an experienced developer of affordable housing, there are concessions in order to get affordable housing. And density is that concession. And I don't think we're gonna get past that issue here within this development. So we're going to, there's no other concessions from an economic standpoint that we can make on a development of this type on this site. And there are no other architectural concessions that we can also make. So we would like to ask for a vote, so we can go on to our Plan B.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Manager Neal, this is Penna.
The other, the other remaining option for you is that their, their 60-day window doesn't expire until February 3rd. So we have a council meeting on February 3rd. If, if you thought there was some additional discussion that, that we should have with them between now and, between, with developers, between now and then, we could do that. But we, we also need to prepare, we also need to prepare findings probably both ways, because remember, you have to not just not approve it, you have to reject it in order for, for the, for the statute to be met. Mr. Kanesh, do you need, would you, can you comment on that a little bit, please?
That's exactly right. If we choose not to act on it tonight, we could do it at the next meeting. And we would, staff would suggest that you have prepared both findings for approval and findings for denial. Between now and the next meeting, you know, whatever discussions you want could take place at the staff level with the applicant. You can provide whatever direction you want to tonight, or not. But what, what the city manager has outlined is a possibility.
Let's finish our discussion up here. I don't know whether that will be influential to Member Staunton and Member Stewart, but at least we can get some other folks' perspective on it. And then we can decide what we wanna do. Member Swenson?
A lot of you sat up here and saw me vote no on this once already, so you're probably wondering why I'm, I'm looking at adding conditions and things onto this. I did spend 10 years on planning, so I've been where Mr. Staunton is. And I've spent 10 years on city council. I know that these people own this property, and what they are allowed to do with it without any conditions. That's not what I see as the best use for it, actually, for your neighborhood. It won't have a boulevard down 72nd, it won't have a lot of things that this particular project can bring. So whether you agree with me or not, I think this is an opportunity to do something here at this time that's right now. Whether, it would be wonderful if, two years ago, when we first started to do the little study of Valley View and Wooddale, we did a study on the west side of France. Yeah, that'd have been great, but we're not there right now. We're, we haven't started it, we're not, we're not anywhere close to, to doing it. Even if we started it next month, we don't have the budget set for it, we don't have the people hired for it, we don't have a process set up yet for it with the right people in place. So bearing that in mind, and knowing that we have no appetite as a city to put a moratorium on commercial building going up right now, and stopping this for that, I don't think we'd win in court, I think we'd lose in court on that. I take a look at this project and think, okay, what can I do to make this project better, considering what the financial parameters are, being able to continue to build this project? And that's what my goal was to do tonight. Now, if it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass, I understand, I've been up here for 10 years, I know I have one vote. I've been voted up and voted down on different motions I've done before. But for me, why I changed and what you saw me go through in the last couple of months is trying to figure out the best thing to do on this site for this area, including your residential area. So that's why I've been supportive of it tonight, and that's why I will vote for it tonight.
Member Brendel?
Thank you. We're not in an ideal situation with this project, because there are pending approvals on traffic. There are pending approvals on the watershed, though that's not uncommon. Projects go forward, and the watershed district moves, moves their approval or disapproval on it beyond our preliminary zoning. But to have a project that, where the traffic plan is not yet fully vetted by the county is a little disconcerting. That said, do I trust that, that if the county doesn't approve the traffic plan, that the traffic plan will be adjusted to come up with something that does work? Yes, I do trust that that would happen. And I trust that the developer would comply with that. Does the density bother me? Not if I like, like affordable housing. And I like affordable housing. And that is frankly how you afford affordable housing. It is something I've, I did not understand six years ago, didn't understand that at all. But I do understand it now. And the, in the current Minnesota Monthly, in the January issue of Minnesota Monthly, it explains this in layman's language. So if you haven't seen it, go get it. It really does describe where we are going and how we can afford to go there. And, and that is, that is one thing that, that I read that, and I thought, they could be writing about what's going on on France Avenue, they literally could. So I will vote in favor of it tonight, there are aspects of this that I am, I, I do like very much. And, and there are aspects of it that need to be worked out. And so hopefully, it, you know, in its, in its form, we move this forward, but it will not be a residential building, from what it sounds like. The traffic will be impacted adversely. And so, the traffic that you've complained about is something that you very much could experience with a medical office building. So, so that's a trade-off. The, like Mayor Hovland mentioned a couple of weeks ago, the Southdale Medical Office Building, 2,800 appointments a day. So if this building is a four-story building, and there are 20 offices on a floor, and you've got 15, 20 appointments per day, you do the math, and that's, that's the traffic that will be generated by this building, which is not 26 cars in the morning, and 26 cars in the evening. So I think that, that really does need to be thought about. And with the, with the possibility of developing 7250 France, another aspect of, of this that's up in the air, I, I would hope that the, the two properties could be developed in a manner that they complement one another, and they solve each other's problems from a traffic flow standpoint, from a stormwater standpoint. One of those properties does, does definitely exacerbate the other. So having them developed in concert would be a great benefit to you, if you live near this. It, it really would. So there really are enough up-in-the-air things and pending things. While I like this project, and I will vote for it for that reason, I think that giving it more thought and more time to see what can be done at 7250 France may indeed be the right answer.
Thank you. So I don't think there's anybody up here at this council level that hasn't thought about the issues of what's in the best interest of the neighborhood, what's in the best interest of the community. Many of us have gone out and met with neighbors, traveled in cars, looked at buildings, heard your concerns about traffic, about access on 72nd Street, school impact, height, density. Height's down a story, the density is still significantly over the comprehensive plan, but it's not unlike what we did over at Lennar, where it's over 40 units per acre, and down the street at 6,500 France, though that is senior housing, that is 80 units per acre. So the density, I think, is an issue that, that we should be thinking about carefully here, just because of the price of the land along France Avenue. What this really reminds me of is, back in 2005, I think I've been on the council about five or six years, we did a study in the Southdale District. And we were, we were moving along, and this speaks to what Member Staunton was talking about, is that in a perfect world, it would be great to go through this whole exercise of what do we want France Avenue to look like over time? How much height can we handle, how much density can we handle? But as we were going along doing this study on the Southdale District in 2005, an application popped up for the Westin Hotel. We were probably three-quarters of the way through the study, and it disrupted everything, because it threw us off that linear path that we were on, and we had to turn around and deal with the Westin. Well, I, I, I know there are some people in the audience that don't like the Westin, but the Westin has been a great addition to our community, part of the fabric of our community, the highest-rated hotel in the Starwood system. The McCormick and Schmick that is there is busier than the other two McCormick and Schmicks in town combined. And if we, if we hadn't had that difficult discussion out of sequence with the planning that was going on, we wouldn't have the Westin today, and I think our community would be poorer for it. It also makes me think about what we see over across the street at the shops of Centennial Lakes. Right before the recession, Roger Staubach's company, Cypress Equities, had a plan for a beautiful condominium complex over there. Would have been the nicest place in town to live, right on the lake, 14 stories. We told them to build an iconic building. It was, it was shut down. We, we voted against it, we didn't get a majority of the people to approve it. And, and what we have now is a parking ramp on our nicest piece of property in town, behind pinstripes. So it's, you know, it's, I think we've tried to address all of these concerns that, that people have. I know that these ongoing concerns about density, a little bit of extra height bother folks. But I think we're making a real mistake in thinking about what's the best use of that property by not embracing this idea of housing, and affordable housing subsumed within it, and, and approving this project. I think it would have been a great project for the neighborhood, everybody could have walked there, they could have had a more pedestrian lifestyle. For me personally, it would have been a vast improvement to your neighborhood, other than what I foresee happening next. So those are my thoughts, I would vote in favor of it, let's vote. Roll call, please.
No.
Member Swenson?
Aye.
Member Brendel?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
No.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. Alright, comprehensive plan, motion fails, and there's no sense voting on the next resolution, I wouldn't think.
Mayor? You will, you'd, you'd need to make another motion to authorize staff to come back with findings for denial. We need to take a, a final action.
Some of...
Could someone repeat what the motion is, please?
The motion is to authorize, what do you want?
Authorize staff to come back...
Findings for denial.
For denial of the comprehensive plan and the preliminary rezoning.
You got a discussion, all those in favor say aye. All say nay, Carrie? Alright. We are on to correspondence petitions, anything else? Manager Neal, other than what we have in front of us on the dais?
Uh, no, there isn't.
Alright, aviation noise update, anything there from either Manager Neal or Member Swenson?
Uh, we have a meeting of the knock that I will be attending Wednesday. The open meeting starts at, uh, hang on, have to get into the calendar, just a minute. Open meeting starts at 1:30, it's at the Richfield City Hall in the Haradua Room, is there? I maybe have a typing, well...
It's, it's at Richfield, Richfield City Hall, anyway.
It's at the...
Okay, yeah, yeah. Far Dalma here.
And the general meeting starts at 1:30, I think I am allowed in at 1:00, because I'm now, I'm now the pseudo-Jony going. And I will have a report on that at our next council meeting.
That's tomorrow?
That is tomorrow. You're welcome to come. We like a lot of good company when we're sitting in the, in the audience. And actually, it's a pretty interesting meeting most of the time in there. You get a lot of statistics about current runway use, which is always pretty valuable.
And just a reminder that at our next council meeting, we'll have staff here from the Metropolitan Airport's Commission...
That's right, thank you.
...to present and interpret the results of the recent noise study that they did here in late summer, early fall of last year.
The other part is, this morning, we were all at a breakfast for the Rotary. And Representative Paulson was there, and we had a short opportunity to talk to him about setting up a meeting date in March, when we are out at the noise conference in the League of Cities Conference. And we didn't get a chance to meet directly with him, last time I hear, that he sent one of his assistants. So he is hearing a lot more from people in the western part of Edina, which are his constituents. It's on his radar screen, where I don't think it was on his radar screen a year ago, so that was good news.
Alright, council comments, Member Stewart? Or anything else on aviation?
No.
Okay.
Alright, a couple of things that have happened. We all attended the regional legislative breakfast meeting on Friday, January 16th. It was good, the mayor is, I think, chair of that organization, and, and does a great job of helping the various constituent cities sort of all say their piece, and, and having each of the county and other representatives who are there have a chance to tell us what's going on, the many legislative representatives. And so, very informative, and, and great to hear from some of those people what the key issues are for them. As Member Swenson said, we all heard Eric Paulson speak this morning. Again, nice to hear about the legislative agenda in Washington, and found that very useful. For upcoming events, the... For upcoming events, the Monday, February 2nd, we have two things going on. At noon, or at 11:30 in the morning, actually, the Edina Education Fund is having their annual show and tell luncheon. I encourage everybody who cares about education in Edina to come and learn how the Edina Ed Fund helps promote really first-class education that we offer in this city.
It's a free lunch.
And it's a free lunch. Also, that evening, we have the Community Honors Awards. Maybe somebody's going to say something more about that, but that's the, where's it? The Grange? Is that where they're holding it? Yeah. And then finally, as a father of an Edina High School band member, I want to promote, the Edina Pops Concert is coming up, and I've given you plenty of advance notice because it does sell out, so I encourage people to get tickets. February 20th and 21st, and February 26th through 28th is the Pops Concert. It's a fantastic concert. It's a wonderful tradition at the high school. It's been going on since well before I was in high school here in Edina. And it's a lot of fun, and the kids just do a magnificent job. So recommend everybody come and see that. And finally, the, tonight was the State of the Union speech, and for those who are tuning into this on television instead of that, or for those who are here in the audience, the city needs people like you who are interested in what's going on in our city. We do have a number of openings coming up on our commissions and boards, and I would encourage those of you who have an interest in our community and in what goes on here to think about throwing your hat in the ring to be appointed to a commission or a board for the city. That's it.
Thank you. Well said. Member Brindle.
All right. I have a couple of things. I serve on the Board of Community Action Partnership of Southern Hennepin, and on Friday, January 9th, there was an info session to tell people about CAPSH and get the word out. And there will be more sessions like this. So basically, in a nutshell, CAPSH is one of 26 independent nonprofit community action agencies. It's an independent agency. It's not part of the county or the state. Serves 44, the 44 communities that make up Southern Hennepin County around the city of Minneapolis. And CAPSH works to mitigate and eliminate the causes and effects of poverty within Hennepin County. They do that through direct service to individuals and families in the areas of financial counseling, foreclosure prevention, energy assistance to keep your gas and heat and oil running and repaired, housing and related services to help people remain in their homes, and first-time homebuyer workshops, rehab, housing rehabilitation services, reverse mortgage. It's a variety of things. Then there are emergency services like stopgap measures to help people get to work, to get their car repaired so that they can get to work. If they need financial assistance to get through a short, tough time, they, if they qualify, they can certainly apply for that. Legal services clinic, there's a variety of issues and services that they provide. And they are serving the customers and clients of Community Action in Minneapolis, since that agency is no longer in business. So that's my first one. My next one is Southwest Twin Cities Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Met on January 15th. They meet monthly, and this meeting was a lunch meeting, kind of mixing the time of day up a little bit. And this focused on the corporate community leaders and community members, the Chamber of Commerce, and we had a Chamber of Commerce and a couple of mortgage bankers there. And they were looking at making sure that connections are made with military families and veterans and their families who are having challenges with employment or with financial needs. If somebody's having trouble making their mortgage payments, the mortgage banker wants to be able to help and come up with some assistance in some way. So it was good to get that conversation started. A question for Manager Neal. We had an email come by about a retreat in February. So do we have a date?
I believe we do, and I think it's the 27th and 28th.
Is it?
Right. So it's a Friday, you know, the times, we haven't set specifically at this point, but kind of the late afternoon of the 27th.
7th.
And the morning of the 28th is what we anticipated.
Okay. How late do you think it'll go?
In the evening on the 27th?
Mm-hmm.
I would.
Into the evening?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think, we're trying to simulate what we did a couple of years ago.
Yeah, yeah. I couldn't remember what the times were.
And I think we were done by 9:00, maybe, 8, 9:00.
Between 9:00.
Good. All right. And then the last one is 494 Corridor Commission is hosting a legislative breakfast that will be attended by Mr. Rosenthal, who was out in the lobby a little bit ago, and Senator Franzen, Representative Earhart, and some other state leaders, and talk about transportation projects and be able to talk with them about the projects that we are most concerned about. And the big one, of course, is 35W 494. So, and Bloomington is, I understand, taking a lead on getting that project to move forward. So that's a, that's a good thing. I think that's three years out. That's a 2017? Two years out. I'll bet it's a 2017. I think that's what I've heard.
All right. Good. Member Swenson.
On the dais, we have the new Explorie Edina from the new agency that is being supported by Hotel Tax to sell the restaurants and other things within our city, including facilities in our city. And you should take a time to look at it. It's pretty englothy, and hopefully it'll bring people in, and I'm excited that we have this to offer. And if we get another hotel, then they'll have more money to work with, so that would be great.
Thank you. Member Staunton.
Don't have a whole lot to add after all those comprehensive summaries. I would just add that I did have a chance, had the nice opportunity to go over and kind of sit in on the Braemar Task Force meeting about a week ago, their visit with the architect that we've retained to look at the big course at Braemar. And then there was a public meeting later that evening. I wasn't able to attend that, but I was quite impressed at the amount of thinking that's gone into considering the alternatives. I want to thank all the people who've spent so much time. They clearly love what they're doing, but they're still spending a lot of time and doing some great things for the community. So I'm looking forward to seeing the possibilities as that comes in front of us. And nothing else other than that.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, thanks for going to the task force meeting. They really appreciated your being there, your interest in what was happening at the golf course. So thanks also, Bob, on the tip on the Pops Concert. It's always a good one to go to, along with Current Jam, which is one of my favorites as well, the talent show at the end of the year. Regional Council of Mayors and the Urban Land Institute had a joint meeting on the 12th. Some interesting topics covered. I can tell you more about it later. I won't hold folks up here. I did go to that meeting on the evening of the 12th out at Braemar with the architect, Richard Mandell from Pinehurst, and there were four options that were presented. And I think the task force has now come up with one additional option they want them to explore, and more on those later as well. On the 10th, I was down in Mankato for a meeting. It was a Saturday, and I got back here late. I don't know if anybody else had a chance to get over to that Quin's Cup at Centennial Lakes. I tried to get there, and I got there about quarter to 5:00, and I think they were all wrapped up, but quite a great event.
I had a 10-year-old playing, a 10-year-old grandson playing. Yes, I was there.
All right. Good. And then on the 9th was the Feds Fest, and they raised some good money and donated it to Edina Give and Go and the Edina Ed Fund. So they were the recipients of some nice checks from the Edina Federation of Women. And that's it for me, I believe. Manager Neal.
Excuse me, Mr. Neal. I think the council needs to have a report on their closed session.
But I think we may need to deliver that next time.
Okay.
Yeah. Couple of things for council. First is something that's labeled Dan Patch advocacy. I need some direction from council on our continued participation in a discussion about the future of the Dan Patch Line. A discussion has started, it's called the South Central Minnesota Inner City Passenger Rail Initiative. It started with primarily a group in Northfield that's been looking at how to connect South Central Minnesota to the metropolitan core cities via rail. They have been hamstringing a bit by what we call the gag rule of that we are unable to have really any kind of significant conversations about the Dan Patch Line. The council has been requested by this group to sign on to a letter, or at least to ask the council to produce a letter and share it with MnDOT, asking to elevate the status of the Dan Patch Line from a Tier 2 to a Tier 1 project within the state rail plan. Doing that would allow MnDOT to schedule and conduct the feasibility study of Dan Patch and the options for that line sooner rather than later. And I think, Mayor, we think it's within a 15-year time period?
I think so. If it's a project retained within MnDOT's Tier 1 state rail plan, my understanding is it's eligible for study and potential implementation within the next 15 years.
Right.
Otherwise, you move into no man's land.
Which is sort of where it is right now as a Tier 2.
You disappear into rail space or somewhere.
So what I would tell you is that there's various levels of support among the cities that are, that are part of the Dan Patch Corridor. I have attended one of the meetings in Northfield, Councilmember Staunton has, former council member Sprague has as well. They're very interested in our participation and support of their initiative. I think you can authorize this letter or sign on to this letter to do further study or to advance a feasibility study to determine whether it's feasible or not, or if it's not feasible, going through what they call the Western Route, which comes up through and includes Edina. There is an alternative route that cuts into the eastern metro that goes into St. Paul. So this is something that really, before staff do any, any kind of work or advocacy on this, we need to get a sense of where the council stands on it. You're not asking for this rail line to be built. I think that's very clear. But you are, with this letter, encouraging MnDOT to study it sooner rather than later. Sense of the council?
Mayor?
Yeah?
I'm supportive of encouraging MnDOT to move this up to Tier 1. And I tell you, the biggest reason why is, you know, I talked to Susie Nacasey in Northfield, who I met when I was down there, and I think there's already 18 different cities that have sent letters to MnDOT and more that are considering it. And the last thing I want to happen is for the conversation to go on and us to be on the outside looking in. We're going to have certain interests, and we ought to be, we ought to be at the table. We ought to be discussing them. And in large part because of the gag rule, you know, there just hasn't been any conversation about this for 15 years, and I'd rather be at the table as part of the conversation than stick my head in the sand and hope that bad things don't happen.
Well, and I think just having the fact that there's already been meetings, there actually is conversation about it. So let's be sitting at the table. I agree with Member Staunton.
I concur.
Okay. All right. Let me, let's see if we got a motion here. You want to authorize me to sign a letter on behalf of the council encouraging MnDOT to place the various potential routings of the Dan Patch Line into Tier 1 for the purposes of the state rail study?
So move.
Second?
And I think we have to be very clear when we do this to our residents. This is the beginning of a conversation. There are a lot of residents that live along that line that are going to be, want to be part of this conversation and get updated on it and things like that. You know, it may move to a point on our agenda where it is, if we have information like we do on airport noise, we talk about that line. So I think it's just a way for us also to keep our residents informed about what's going around. We're just one part. We're a cog in this. So.
I think that's exactly right, and we've gone too long not talking about it now, so let's.
Or pretending not to.
Yeah, pretending not to talk about it, so let's get it out in the open and have a conversation.
So if this, if this motion passes, we'll prepare a letter based on the sample letter that we received from the, from the group that's kind of sponsoring this initiative. We'll prepare it for your signature, and we'll get it out in the mail this week.
I've seen the sample letter because we did something similar with the ICE 169 Corridor Coalition the other night, the concern there being, you know, that the passenger rail option from Mankato to the metro area remain in Tier 1 for purposes of the rail study. I didn't really care for the verbiage in the form letter, but you'll polish it up well, I'm sure.
Okay.
Okay. So we've got, any more conversation on that one? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Carrie?
Next item is, I don't need any action on council. It's more of a heads up that I'm going to be asking you for action at a future council meeting. It's regarding a proposed expansion project at the South Metro Public Safety Training Center. As you know, we're one of the owners. There are four owner agencies of that center. We're one, cities of Bloomington and Eden Prairie are also owners, as well as the Metropolitan Airports Commission. We've been working for the past year trying to determine what the needs are for the organization and how the needs have changed. The facility's 10 years old as of last year. And what we've had under design now for the past couple of months is a 2,200-square-foot expansion that provides additional classroom space, a large classroom that would be able to have as much as 100 to 120 people in a classroom. We would also be able to have that, you know, for other city meetings as well, so it's a, be a very nice facility. Estimated cost at this point, and this is an architect's estimate, is about $800,000, including FFNE and technology. Our share of that, the way we break our costs out at the training center, is $160,000. So we're continuing to refine that number. The Metropolitan Airports Commission has signed on to the project and committed their cost share. Bloomington is in a little bit of flux right now, just with their between city managers, but it will be coming up there. And Eden Prairie was discussing this tonight as well. So I will put together a more formal proposal to you that shows where this money might come from and what exactly the project entails, and probably bring it to you on February 17th for an action.
Does the land on which the proposed expansion would occur belong to us, or has it belonged to the police and private training facility?
We are the owner, so the city of Edina continued ownership of that property. So in addition to.
So are we getting credit for the land, additional land we're donating?
I think we, I will check into that. I think that the credit for the value of the land was incorporated in at the very beginning of that project in 2004. But we'll, but we'll look back into the records to make sure.
Is it planted off separately?
I don't, I don't know right offhand.
I'd be interested to know.
At the time we built it, I didn't much care.
Yeah, no, you wanted it, well, some people wanted it. I wanted to put a soccer dome there.
Yeah.
And I didn't get very far.
It's a great location, great location. But, but in addition to our cost share, it would also have to go through all of our regular regulatory process, planning and zoning, so it has a little bit of process to go through yet. And then I'll just finish with two updates for you. February 3rd, in addition to having MAC officials come to our meeting in the evening, we also have Commissioner Callison that night as well. So we're going to do her the honor of putting her presentation to you, which she does just on a regular basis ahead of the MAC officials. So she'll come and do a presentation about city-county issues and. So she'll come and do a presentation about city-county issues, and she does that for all the cities in her commissioner district.
And she's the new chair.
And she's the new chair.
She's the chair.
And will they have had on their dais yet the decision of what to do with the library? Don't know.
No, they won't. They won't have that resolved yet. They have some discussions they have to have with the city of Edina before they do. And finally, just a reminder that we have our work session that night is the joint meeting with our state legislative group. So if you have some issues that you'd like them to come prepared to address, let me know what those are, so I can give them a heads-up. Otherwise, we'll talk to them primarily about some transportation issues, the MLC agenda, and probably municipal liquor issues. But if there's something beyond that fairly limited group of issues, let me know. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Anything else from anyone on the council? All right. We stand adjourned.
Those are the lines.